We.
So how do I fight with the truth bank?
My, my.
I've deposited a check.
I don't want it to. My brother flew out.
As well.
Good to go.
Morning, everyone. We're going to follow the Montgomery County Planning Commission Board Meeting for December eleventh. The order, uh, the record showed that the court currently holds a quorum. Uh, with myself, John Ernst, Vice Chair Dulce Flaherty and Bob Lou will be back shortly, um, in the room. And we have Sandra, Jonathan, and Nicole. Online and Obed is excused today. Uh, without any more comments from Planning Commission members in the room, Dulce, John.
I'd like to thank everyone for all the work that was put into the Montgomery Awards. Uh, at Meadowwood, it was a great event. Thank you all. Patty DeGrater team was wonderful, supportive. And Meadowwood continues to be a very welcoming environment. I took it upon myself just to write a personal thank you, um, to Paul. No, I think it's Nordam, Nordman, is that what you call him?
Yeah.
Who just said how much they're, how pleased they were to have us there. So doing that and, uh, the initiation of the Charlie Tornetta. Uh, we can be informal called the Charlie Tornetta Award. And having Alzone receive it, having Charlie's family there, it was a really great event. So thank you, everyone.
I don't time. Any other board comments, John?
I was gonna say the same exact thing.
Sandra. Jonathan or Nicole?
I'm fine. Thank you.
No comments. Thank you, Stephen.
Be careful driving, Nicole.
No comment. No comment.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
With that, then we'll take a, uh, we'll have a motion. Look to approve the board meeting minutes for our regular monthly board meeting from November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Seconded. Are there any comments or corrections to the meeting minutes? From those in the room? Those online?
No.
What was that, John?
No, no, no comments.
Um, seeing none, is there any negative votes to approve the meeting minutes? It has been approved. Our next order of business is public comment, public or staff comment. Is there any? Public comment or staff people then in the room? Any public or staff comment online? Seeing none, we'll go to our first formal agenda item, which are the Community Planning Assistance Contract. Something Paul and Eric Jurel will discuss with us, the Pottstown Springfield Township and Indian Valley Regional Planning Commission, uh, contracts.
All right, Eric, how are you doing? All right, good morning. Uh, so yeah, three contracts up for renewal. All have the term of January first, uh, two thousand twenty-five through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven. Uh, the terms, uh, in terms of the costs are on the resolution, which I'll let you read in when you're ready. Um, so essentially, uh, for Springfield Township, um, a new three-year contract to their existing community. Uh, Margot Truska is the planner for Springfield. Uh, we'll be finishing up their Saldo rewrite, uh, and then moving on, um, to a comprehensive rewrite of their zoning ordinance. We're also doing some grant work assistance, uh, doing a project, a TC DI, a project Sheltonham Road, um, road diet feasibility study we discussed on our board tour back in September. Uh, so that contract will be renewed. Pottstown Borough, again, uh, Mike Knarkowich and Adam Shaw, so the planners for Pottstown. Uh, we'll continue our work with our ordinance review committee, um, focusing on some zoning work for placemaking and design standards for their downtown. Uh, we're also going to be helping out DVR PC, who's doing a special project for some station area concept planning, uh, potentially for the rail. Uh, and so that will be that three-year contract. Indian Valley Regional Planning Commission. Um, obviously, we're wrapping up the comprehensive plan right now. That should probably be done middle, end of, of two thousand twenty-five. Uh, and then we'll be working on implementation. One of the projects they've identified for implementation initially would be, uh, a regional wide trail and connectivity study. You know, that would be an exciting project for them. Uh, and then just ongoing organizational support and keeping that organization running and up to speed. Uh, and so that's, uh, primarily me running that right now, and, uh, Margaret's been helping me out tremendously on the comprehensive plan. So everyone take any questions on those?
We get the, uh, resolution. So before us, we have MCPC Resolution number twenty-four dash twelve point one. Community Planning Assistance Contract Resolution of December eleventh, two thousand twenty-four. There are three contracts. Three numbered contracts in this resolution. Number six, seven, seven is Springfield Township, um, from January first, two thousand twenty-five to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven. Total cost is eighty-five thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Split fifty percent to the municipality and fifty percent to the county. Again, we have, next one is six, set is contract six, seven, nine, same timeline. Total cost is ninety-eight, I'm sorry, Pottstown Borough. Uh, same timeline, total cost ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars. Uh, split fifty-fifty again, and contract six, eight, two, Indian Valley Regional Planning Committee. Uh, same timeline, total value is one hundred nine thousand, thirty-two dollars, split fifty-fifty between municipalities or in county and county. Um, is there a motion to approve the resolution? So move, it's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any comments or questions? To Eric, um, board members in the room?
Eric, Eric, is there any rationale? To include someplace in the resolution? The numbers of the year, number of years that we have had contracts with these people? I think what is really important is the longevity of our relationships. And might there be? A benefit for having that in there?
Yeah, I think it'd be interesting to, to kind of keep track of how, because particularly some of these Springfield, I know, and, and Pottstown have been long-term contracts.
Sometimes they, they step away for a while. Remember, War Sister did for, I mean, sometimes they come back, sometimes they don't, but I think the longevity and the relationships documented in some way would be something to consider.
Right, right. Yeah, when we get into sort of the, the pre-nineties, it's a little harder to, to track those, and Springfield's been around that long. So it might take a little digging to, to do, and which is why I've been hesitant to, to kind of digging into that, but we can, we can look that up.
I mean, it doesn't have to be, you know, um, in Cuneiform or something like that, you know, I mean, it's before, you know.
Well, the parchment paper.
I think it's, I think it's, it's, uh, to commend the community planning group for what you have done over the decades in bringing people together about this and also continuing the relationships. So thank you.
Yeah, that they've continued to find it viable over a thirty or forty-year period, even through multiple planners, multiple projects.
People just don't know.
Right.
You know, we're getting to three decades, almost three decades with some of these people.
Excuse me, Eric. Have you gone any further in? In categorizing how much we've gotten for the individual townships? Over the past, I think we spoke about it the last, the last meeting, you know, where we were talking about the grants. And we, we were saying it'd be a good selling point when you go say to Pottstown, say, oh, by the way, you know, we've, we've not, you know, the candidates have viewed X amount of dollars in the grants over the past ten years.
Right.
Is that going any further?
Not, not for a ten-year period. When we renew the contracts, we'll summarize the previous three years and work we've done for them. Um, and categorize, you know, particularly because we don't do grant writing for all the communities, but for the ones we do, we would be, we pull that in for that analysis. But, um, yeah, we can take a, a longer look, uh, for some of those. And again, and we'd be writing, you know, the grants, and some of them might be Monco twenty forty, might be DCD or DCNR. Um, and so, yeah, we'd be a piece of that. I wouldn't say that we've gotten them the money, but, you know, the grant writing is certainly a, a big part of that.
It's all how you presented it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. John, any comments?
I have no disrespect.
Any comments from, uh, Sandra, Jonathan, or Nicole?
Stephen, I have a couple of questions, if I could, two related questions, Eric. One, did we get any feedback on the cost of the county services as we, you know, discussing, you know, the, the costs, um, that, you know, and, and increases that are, uh, going out to our communities? And then related, are the contract renewals for th- these three communities at similar dollar levels to their last contract, or are they up or down? Thank you.
Yep. So, yeah, these are all at, at the new rates, uh, overall, and I don't remember who I, who I had the discussion with. So pretty much there hasn't been any pushback on the, on the rates, um, and the increase. Uh, most of the communities, I think, you know, just value the service and, and understand that costs generally increase over time. Um, there's always an increase in their costs from three-year contract to three-year contract, because we always had an escalation. It was obviously a little bigger this time. Um, there's probably one community that I'm working pretty closely with now. Um, just because it's a much smaller community with a much smaller operating budget, um, and trying to keep their taxes flat, so I, I am negotiating with them. Uh, for the other communities, I think for all of these, they are slight increases, uh, under their current rates. Um, we did adjust some of them to kind of right-size them, which we do every three years, based on how many meetings we've actually been attending, uh, and the level of service that we've been providing. Um, so these are probably a slight increase, um, probably not the full rate increase, um, but, uh, larger than they would have been without, uh, without the increase we did.
Sandra?
Comment?
And just on the overall, we did two last month, three this month. I think these five will be going to the county commissioners next week. Upper Gwinnett, we have in hand. Horsham, I believe, is in front of their council now, and we're still working through Lansdale, Lower Frederick, Marlboro, and Rockledge, but they all have contracts in their hand.
Yeah. Any other word comments? Any comments for staff or public online or in the room on this agenda item? Seeing none, all in favor for the, uh, Community Planning Assistance Contract Resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Thanks, Eric.
Stephen.
And next up is our, our Horsham School District Enrollment Projection Contract. Call on Ian. Hey, your name?
How are you doing?
Good.
Yeah, oh, okay. Um, so, uh, let's.
You want to use a walk?
That's what I was gonna say, in case you thought that.
Took it out.
Huh?
I got ahead of you. Like one mind.
It's true. You and I, linked forever. Um.
That's definitely your bird.
Uh, so just in case you thought that the county planning section was a, uh, Monco twenty fifty, one-trick pony, we do do other work, uh, and this is some of them. Uh, we are entering into a short-term contract with the Happer Horsham School District to do a an updated enrollment projection study for them. This will be their fourth, uh, study that we have authored. And it is set to kick off, uh, at the very beginning of next year, January first, and will run through April fifteenth. Um, with a, a seventy-five percent share of the ten thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars in a total contract cost, if I can find it, of thirteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars, uh, like Eric's new contracts at the new updated, uh, planner rates. Um, I have another one for you to approve in January as well. Um, these continue to be a popular product that we provide to school districts. So it's, it's nice to know that we can continue to do this.
Okay, before we give you the question. Those are any of them? Before us, we have, uh, MCPC Resolution twenty-four dash twelve point two, Short-Term Contract Resolution, Assembly eighteen, two thousand twenty-four. In that resolution, it is contract number six, eight, one, Happer Horsham School District, as mentioned by Ian, who has the contract is January first, two thousand twenty-five, to April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, total cost is thirteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy hours. Split fifty, seventy-five percent to the school district and twenty-five percent to the county. Is that, is there a motion to approve the resolution? So move, is there a second?
Yeah.
Remove the second. Are any comments or questions from Planning Commission members in the room?
Thanks, Eric. And just a quick question. When we go into these type of studies, is there a, uh, a preconceived idea from the school district about whether they're seeing the numbers increase or decrease? And do we actually prove them incorrect? In whether, in like, we, we know that we're getting so much bigger and I think the, the Planning Commission comes and says, yeah, no, that's not what we're finding.
Um, I, I don't know if we're proving them wrong. I think that school districts keep a really close eye on their enrollment numbers because they have to make everybody fit into their facilities, or if they can't make the student population fit, then they have to get creative or build something new, and that's always a complex decision. So if anything, I think that they know and that they come to us for verification of what they're seeing happening in real time.
Okay, fair. Thanks.
Uh, no, I was.
It's the same question.
What, what, what the results are, I mean, or do you go back and, you know, at, at the end of a, a one-year period or three-year or whatever it is, you projected to want to get another ten thousand students? And, you know, do you check with the school district and say, oh, by the way, what was, what's your enrollment from January twenty twenty-five to January twenty twenty-nine? Now, what, what did you show?
Uh, so we, at least in this case, I'm at Fair Horsham, we've done them every three years. So we will, we'll take a look back at our prior report to see if we made an accurate prediction of what was to come. At, at the very least, these, the short-term viewpoint of looking at the student population in such a small increment is usually pretty accurate. It's when we get further out that things get a little more imprecise, so. Um, and, and honestly, we've got districts that are growing really rapidly and districts that are shrinking and losing school age population and need to make decisions about, you know, how to, to adapt to that situation.
But could we make that a subject for the next couple of communities or so? What's that? And the results that you have found on the previous studies?
Well, I haven't done, when's the last time you did, we had one in front of us?
Yeah.
You know, over a year, right?
Laura, what was Laura Marion? Results of, of a study or just in general?
Well, the last contract that we fulfilled, that we had, we had a presentation of the findings.
Uh, we, I don't think we have presented the findings to you recently. We did a, a study for Upper Marion School, Area School District, which makes up Upper Marion and Bridgeport. Um, they're attracting the new students from some of the, you know, larger developments in Upper Marion, as well as the, you know, waterfront development that's taking place in Bridgeport.
When was that said?
Um, this, this current school year.
Really?
We're close to it.
Thing I think is interesting too, is to put the layers of uh, demographics of the school districts and the multifamily housing that's being built. Because the question is whether that multifamily housing is producing substantially more students or not, or concept of what the impact of multifamily housing, because every place you look, you're seeing it. And, um, I think that intersection is interesting.
So, funny, bring it up. We are really close to finishing up, uh, an update of our study where we looked at the characteristics of, uh, school-aged children in household types, housing types rather, uh, and household size, and the, the type of demographics that make up the, the constituents of these various homes and various housing types. We're, we're just, we're doing some final edits and we're gonna make it look a little nicer, and then we hope to have a, a document to present to all of you in the future. Um, so, but, uh, in the short term, the the, the way we did the study has changed, but the multifamily units continue to be the housing type that produces the fewest number of generally speaking.
I'll add on to, uh, to Bob's point, um, with, with the pat checking, you go, and I, I used to do these up through, with twenty nineteen, and so, yeah, we, we had pretty strong tracking, you know, every year checking in what the differences were. Um, of course, but, uh, as of twenty twenty, that exercise was not very, uh, fruitful, uh, because of COVID, and all the numbers were all crazy. So in fact, we didn't do very many studies for a couple of years because of most people realize it really isn't a point, because we just don't know what's going on. Um, so we're kind of getting back into it so we, we can pick that up again. I would just hesitate to say, oh, you know, twenty to twenty, even almost into twenty, certainly twenty-two, coming out of twenty-three. Um, you, it's, we're not gonna be able to life really understand or have numbers that immediately say the truth.
I think it'd be interesting to see the results of some of the numbers that come out. You know, or Upper Marion and Bridgeport, or this one for Happer Horsham, once done forward, just to kind of track where they might have been in previous contracts and where they are now, and what the expectations are, what the objections are.
What, I mean, I was thinking Lower Marion, maybe it's too many years back, but I, I just, when I was looking at the two forty-sevens and I saw more apartments going in in Ardmore, you know, um, and so many around that area. Are they all single or empty nesters? I mean, it, you know, are, are double income, no children? I mean, I can't imagine that they're not getting stressed to a certain extent in these, these villages that are getting more multifamily. I mean, even Satterton, looking at what's going on at that, where the old high school was the other day, I just said, somebody's living there.
Sneaking in. Uh, well, those, I think the Lower Marion proposal we were looking at might have been for the expansion of Ardmore House, which is a senior um, complex of us, no school children. But, um, you know, in a district like Lower Marion, for example, we have enough detailed information from them by multifamily building to say, these are the number of students that live in this building, and there are hundred units, and we can say, all right, there are only, on average, this fractional number of schoolchildren per multifamily. We really do get enough, a, a lot of information just based on the busing data that the district's key to. So, you know, some, some apartment complexes have a lot. Maybe they have bigger units and more bedrooms. Uh, a three-bedroom apartment can easily fit a, a family. Um, but sometimes the construction is newer and too expensive. Sometimes an older complex has lower rents and a better entry point for a, a family, uh, with children. Um, it's all over the place. Uh, Lower Moreland is a good example of this. They've got, they're growing rapidly, uh, and they contend, and it's not something that I can really put my finger on, but they contend that they're getting an influx of uh, Ukrainian and Russian refugees who are fleeing violence and upheaval in their, in their, from their homes. And that they, they moved to northeast Philly to, to bunk with relatives or, or acquaintances, and then they make their way to Lower Moreland. That's not something I can really, you know, prove, but that's, that's what they think is causing their growth.
So as we do the comprehensive plan, I think some of these numbers and we're, and the issue of housing is so important. Some of these, these numbers were really, we got to think about it when we're, we're, um, uh, deciding on what kind of policies to promote.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any comments from board members online? Any comments from staff or public on this agenda item? Online or in the room? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of the resolution, say aye.
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 Any opposed? And, and.
Thank you.
Next up is our twenty-fifteen environmental resilience.
Right, you can start that one. I'm back. Uh, it should be.
Uh, calling on Ian again.
You can't get rid of an. Sustainability and infrastructure, that's what you're looking.
That's us.
All right, I promise, Chloe, that I have this under control. But here we go.
Morning, all.
Good to see you.
Morning.
Chair.
Sorry for the delay. Good readings, but I was trying to figure out what I see then.
Air conditioning.
Although you have your own interpretation, but I think Dulce got it right, which was advisory committee.
You should know, Stephen.
Well, know and recall are entirely.
He wants to make me feel useful.
Yeah.
All right, so, um, we are back for another presentation on what we have been doing with the Monco twenty fifty Advisory Committee. Uh, the vast majority of this presentation is going to be handled by Drew and John, but I'm just here to, to kick things off. Oh, I have a clicker. Great. So, um, we have been making our way through several topics, and I will come back to this at the end and give you an update on what you're gonna see coming up next. Uh, but the presentation we gave to the advisory committee in October, so we're doing some catch-up. What, uh, was on environmental systems and infrastructure. I think this was a very complex topic for the advisory committee. I know it was complex for me, but it is something that is important for us to think about as we move forward with thinking about this plan overall. Um, in twenty fifty, we, we have a vision for, um, for the future, and these are some of the things that the advisory committee brought up. Uh, when we've just, we initially sat down with everybody and just talked about what their thoughts were. We talked about having, uh, better riparian corridors and more trees. We talked about expanding regional planning, um, to, um, to have rational distribution of development. We talked about um, teaming up with our utility companies. We've mentioned that, um, we want to position ourselves for success through sustainable infrastructure. And we talked a lot about, um, utility privatization and how that really does matter a lot. That it, it helps to ensure people have access to the utility they need. Um, among other terms, we talked a lot about a lot of different things. So, next slide. Right, I have a clicker. Um.
Wait, wait, what's that good? I had to. I'll try.
Uh, and like, like all planning topics, right, we're not talking about this in a vacuum. Uh, environmental resiliency and infrastructure really does connect to all of the topics that we're thinking about for Monco twenty fifty. Um, the way that we, uh, provide for electric vehicles, for example, is really tied to transportation. Um, the way that we think about our environmental systems and how they can handle stormwater runoff really relates strongly to our development patterns. So it's, it's not something that we can really think about alone, but it is part of a larger system. Uh, next slide, because I've got the clicker. I remembered that. So, uh, I'm gonna hand this off to Drew. Thank you.
All right, good morning. Um, else, I want to start off by saying, I know some of you have seen, uh, a presentation on this before. Uh, we've updated it with some a draft aspirational goals. I think that's the term we, we've landed on, uh, and we want your input on that. So even if you've seen it before, you still have to pay attention. When we presented this to a, a number of, uh, county departments and to the, uh, advisory committee, we, but we had to start with just some definitions. So when we talk about infrastructure, we're talking about built things, uh, and it's not a really good definition, but uh, they are systems that allow our communities to function. Uh, they provide drinking water, they provide energy, power to our homes, to our businesses, they provide the internet service and so on. And then on the flip side, we have uh, infrastructure that takes away all the, the, the waste, all the, the sewage and the trash and so on, and processes it and disposes of the property properly. So we have different types of in, infrastructure with different function, but that's the infrastructure side of things. And the systems, environmental systems is a little squishier. It's, uh, because we don't pay for these things, we didn't build these things, uh, we don't, uh, even really get too involved in the day-to-day management of these systems, but they still function. And because they function, we have a livable environment, so they're really, really important to maintain. And you see there, there are things like wetlands and steep slopes and floodplains and forests and streams. You know, maintaining the hydrologic cycle is very important. Um, because, especially because when we start to see those systems degrade through human activity, then we end up paying to repair them, and that gets really expensive. So it's very important to understand what these environmental systems are and to preserve them, which brings us to our first draft, draft aspirational goal under the environmental systems, which very simply says, in twenty fifty, Montgomery County environmental systems will be protected and enhanced. Now, these are lofty and they're big, you know, big picture umbrella kind of things. Underneath them, there will be uh, steps to achieve these goals or steps to get us there, targets, and so on with more detail, but just initially, when you see this, what's, what's your initial reaction? We're gonna talk about these all at the end, but I just thought, for right now.
Too broad.
She said, too what?
Too broad.
Too broad, okay. No. Yeah.
I mean, there might, there may be more to it I should go through, but if you're asking me right now, to me, it's too broad.
Yeah, yeah.
I would say, yes. Like, what does that mean? Protected, unless, yes.
All right, we will work on that. John, so.
Oh, I was taking notes.
Good morning. Um, Drew and I are gonna hand off as we go through this. Um, I am going to cover the next part where we talk about what are really the drivers of change in Montgomery County when we talk about. The next part where we talk about what are really the drivers of change in Montgomery County when we talk about environmental systems and infrastructure. Um I see Matt Popek is here. My uh arch nemesis Matt Edmonds is not here. We are going to talk about the most important thing on the plan. This section is going to save the world. So pay close attention, let's focus. I mean, they do like to pave things over. I will say. I mean, all the impervious surfaces, the greenhouse gas emissions, like.
Forget the orange cones.
As you are, yeah, the orange cones. Yes, exactly. So. Drivers of change, the what is pressuring our systems in Montgomery County. Um to put it simply, we're looking at development and climate change are really forcing change. Land development. This is a tough one. This is one that we really have to be thoughtful and consider. Because development by itself is not bad. We want a place for people to live and thrive in Montgomery County. The issues can be is how do we balance that development with protecting our natural systems? And protecting and fostering the infrastructure we need to serve that development. So, I mean, I'm gonna leave it up to the county planning sections who are not my arch rivals. Um they do an amazing job of explaining the development pressures that Montgomery County is seeing. So I'm not gonna go over that too much. But we do need to think about as we are developing and growing, how do we balance that with the protection of our systems? And then climate change. Climate change is definitely having an impact on Montgomery County. You've heard me talk about this before. It is going to get hotter. And wetter. And sometimes it's going to get drier for longer periods of time, like we just saw. We saw drought periods. Basically, the weather is going to get more extreme. When it does rain, we are going to get more intense storms. And possibly more frequent storms in between those systems. So how do we handle these issues? We, at the county, this is one thing that we wanted to make sure the advisory committee was aware of. We did do the potential climate change vulnerability analysis for the county. Where we looked at heat flooding and vulnerable populations, created a matrix where we can look and see. Everybody is vulnerable. We are all at risk. But who is more at risk than others? So this is a tool that we are continuing to promote. We are continuing to try to improve. Um and hopefully with this can help guide our discussions moving forward. The red areas are the areas that have higher than average vulnerability to climate change. They are the hotter areas. They are the areas that are more prone to flooding and they have the most vulnerable populations. Those are the three metrics that we combined equally. Um to get that. The areas that are in the darker green are those that are on average less vulnerable. So.
And which and the red areas, if you can just describe the the rough areas, I think you got Pottstown.
With that is um Ambler. And then mostly what you are seeing is you are seeing are more densely populated areas. You know, it's pretty intuitive. Now, what was interesting was when you get granular with this and we had to do some re- refining. Because you would see on a very small scale, you would see suburban subdivisions that would pop up based on the fact that. Maybe there were elderly people there with a lot of impervious surfaces and a tree canopy that hadn't matured yet. So it was hotter and then you had potentially vulnerable populations. Um so it does, you know, this is, it's it's telling a story which needs more. You know, more study as you get on a granular level in the municipality.
You can see me kind of.
Yeah, I I saw the.
My question is, where do we put the layer of of which um residents are dependent on wells?
That is not in there.
Well, let me tell you, if this drought. Up where I live, now we, I I don't have any of the facts, talking to my plumber. There is, as I am nervous, as I have a well with two residents on it, there are issues of longstanding wells going dry. There is no public water. So i- the impact is pretty profound. Um so I think in some way we should also take a look at who's on wells.
I think that's, we will, as part of this discussion, we will talk about the infrastructure around public's private, uh public water. Um and for this specific tool, um we have a section of it where we call it the deeper dive. Where we can add all sorts of different layers and that would be an interesting layer to add and have a conversation about. Cause it's not intuitive. Like I come up here and I preach it's going to get wetter and then somebody's like, well, we just had a drought for two months. Why you, you know?
Especially places that have people on wells, but they have wastewater. Connected to wastewater treatment. So somebody like me who always thought it was great that I had public sewer. Um but I have a well now understands that I've been taking all my brown water and flushing it down the perky omen. When I should be recharging my aquifer.
Not flushing it down the perky omen.
Let's strike that from the official record. But it's the groundwater recharge that you are talking about.
You know, but the reality is it's it's maybe challenging if we have multiple years like this. And there is no way that somebody's gonna go and get public water in the upper perch and many places nearby them.
And we could talk about it in the context of the more intense storms that we are going to get. While the annual precipitation will be greater, those storms are not, they don't soak in. They're not like, you know, they hit. They flash, they run, you know, and then they're going down the perky omen as well. They're not staying, your rain's not staying in your neighborhood. So as we.
Just a quick question, John. Um is this a new study that you're pro- providing to us? Or have you done ones? Well, no, just about just the overall presentation. Uh is this a a new one for us or have you done this in years past?
Uh this presentation has been done at least twice for the comp plan purposes. Um I have done the presentation about climate change potential vulnerability analysis over the course of the past few years. Um to a myriad of audiences locally, state. I was even on a FEMA, Fimo. The most highly attended FEMA coffee workshop ever was me.
Okay, besides you and one of your friends, how many people?
Uh there were like eight hundred and some that attended it. Yeah.
Yes, water, too much or too little really gets people's attention.
I mean, Taylor Swift was the other half of the presentation, but like really people came to see me. So, but this is, but it's interesting is because it is a topic that people are interested in. So, and this is a tool that can evolve and grow and I do, you know, I appreciate the input about the on hot water. So educating our advisory committee on what we have going on. Um the extreme heat. This is the map that we use. This is our heat island map for the county. Um. You know, we do, we are looking at the lack of tree cover. We are looking at impervious surfaces. We are looking at. The more densely built areas are the ones that are potentially hotter. Um and the things that it will affect, it will affect our physical infrastructure. Um you know, our roads, our bridges, can they handle the heat? It will affect our natural. Systems, our environmental systems. We are already starting to see saldos where the vet, where the plant lists. Are going to need to be modified to reflect a changing environment, the plants that will no longer be able to thrive in Pennsylvania. And the plants that now will be able to thrive. So both landscaping, agriculture, you know. Or what kind of uh xeriscaping are we using, all sorts of issues that we're seeing. And then most importantly, the human element of it. The people who are living in the county who may not have access to, you know, air conditioning. Who may not have access to cooling centers, to pools. All of these things are things that we will need to wrestle with. Why is it such a challenge? You know, because our, the things that we are most used to as a municipality, zoning, the saldo. You know, have a limited scope when it comes to actual building design. We are limited by the con- the adopted construction code. Um in Pennsylvania, seems to be a few cycles behind with some of these things and is a challenge that municipalities have to face it. How can we get the best practices in um on a municipal level? Um you know, we talked about tree canopy, we're talking about street trees. We've talked about this before. The challenges associated with street trees of finding locations and then operations. And maintenance of maintaining those street trees. So after they get planted, they survive and thrive.
There's been an ongoing, I mean, I've been involved in a couple of conversations. You know, the saldos are generally regulate tree replacement for trees removed during land development project. But do nothing for the homeowner who wants to just cut, who wants to cut trees down. Because they want more sunlight or whatever it may be. Have have you experienced those discussions? With municipalities and do you know how many municipalities incorporate um tree replacement for non-land development projects?
There's no legal tool to do that.
There's no what?
There's no legal, like there's no, there's no tool by which municipalities can require someone to replace a tree. On their private property if they're not gonna land it on them.
Right, they, yeah, they they they, that's true, but you're also right, Steve. They they can still try and and. Many of the municipalities that have shade tree commissions have certain, like a permit process or something for tree removal. I'm not sure the number of how many there are in the county.
I can think of a couple. Your your neighbors.
Tools to have their um tree replacement standards apply any trees that were removed like within three to five years before.
Yeah, I know that's true.
I, you you've heard of that tree.
I, well, not from my, I went, we dealt with property in Abington when I was a junior, so. The, sort out a bunch of trees before they did their land development application.
Um I'm gonna, I'm actually working on a project in partnership with Chester County on. How municipalities ordinances can affect building energy consumption, which kind of goes into the issue that we're just talking about. I have a question for you guys now. You're gonna ask me questions, I'm gonna ask you questions back. Is that permitted? Is that, is it, are you allowed to do that? The the three to five before land development to say that you have to replace those trees?
And somebody could challenge it if they wanted to. Um but we have such good aerial photography now that's like. Very particularly heated and you can see when trees were removed, but I know Patty's also researched this like forestry, right?
Yeah, so that's been, I think that's one of the case law pieces where um developer use the forestry, they allow, allow to like timber your property. As the argument that they were able to do.
Some some towns have a walk back, in other words, like if they file for subdivision today. And they took trees down a year and a half ago, they'll somehow come up with a number of trees that they did take down and get replacements.
Yeah, cause I mean, I think more of the argument is, more of the deterrent is the cooperation of the municipality during the land development process. Um you know, there are aspects to the subdivision land development ordinance that some towns are lost. You know, fully pushed like, you know, for instance, like sidewalks. So I'm talking, I give you a perfect example, I was talking about the project in Abington. So. They have a few hundred feet of frontage for this property and they tore all these trees down. There's not a sidewalk anywhere that you had. But it could have, and it would have cost them a lot of money to put sidewalks in because of utility poles and all that kind of stuff. You know, without cooperation, you know, you end up having work costs involved. So there aren't deterrence there, that are within the subdivision land development ordinances. That you can go back to what Marley was saying within a certain period of time and say, look, you know, we need you to replace the trees that you took down. Or the land development process is gonna be more difficult.
Okay, cause that's it's something that I think I may want to include in my, in that work as a possibility, because landscaping shade produces energy. Alright, we gotta keep moving on or else I'm gonna get yelled at for taking too long for my own selfish purposes.
Situations where a property owner has removed trees. In preparation for someone to come and buy it for development. So then the current owner of the property is developing, is not the one that removed the trees. So it's like, how do you, who do you go back after to penalize for removing the trees? They're doing it in preparation for selling it to someone who wants to come in and develop it later. So there's this piece of ownership about who's doing the foresting.
I think, I did not realize that you could walk that back. So I think it's an interesting tool to think about. Alright, we gotta move.
You know, if you start to look at the the letter of regulations in a lot of these stuff. So I mean, you can nip it the hell out of the developer. If the town engineer chose to nip the hell out of a subdivision, out of the land development application. And just continue to create roadblocks and cross cross points if they want to, you know, so.
Well, they 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 won't give you the waivers that you want.
Well, that's the first thing.
So you have to locate everything within four hundred feet.
Yep.
Or existing features.
So there are things that municipalities can do. They just have to have the will to do it and to promote the work that we do as an organization. That educational piece to our municipalities of this is an issue. Think about this. You know, as you're moving through that land development process to fight for trees, to fight for, you know, whatever sort of benefit.
You have to have the eyes on ground, like, you know, somebody could be tearing down trees. You just, the municipality may just not know about it. And on the, I'll give you an anecdote on the other side, if somebody owned a property right off of the Penny Park Trail. Had a house on and everything and they, for the most part, they're top of their property because they wanted trees away from the house. And you know, people showed up as word beings yelling about trees and why aren't they being replaced and. You know, in that situation, that's a property right as it stands right now.
That's why I work with our municipalities trying to build really strong land, um landscape in the subdivision where it's that are really. It's about percentage of candy coverage, so that even if there's not, they can't go back and they. You know, like someone takes something down, the new developer still has to meet a certain percentage of candy.
Yeah, this part, this the lava project, sorry, you know, it's not really a subject.
Probably on the, yeah, so again.
They didn't have land to subdivide either, so.
I just want to make sure I wasn't gonna get yelled at by Chloe. And one of the other things to think about is the populations that are living in the houses that are most vulnerable to heat. You know, the older neighborhoods, the renters who where the homeowner may not have an incentive to install central air. To ensure that the house is tight, you know, so that their air quality is is uh what we need it to be. So, here's another draft aspirational goal. Um in twenty fifty, Montgomery County will have adapted to the impacts of climate change. I Dolce, based on your eye roll, I am going to assume that Drew is going to write a comment now.
I I I mean, I I I need a little more of your adjectives in there, but we'll have adapted. We'll continue to adapt. You know, I I mean, I understand the vision statements. The difference between vision statements and aspirational goals, but I just think some of that extra verbiage. Kind of gives us some energy into them as opposed to blanket statements.
Gotcha. So we need, we need statements that have momentum.
Yes. That are pushing. I particularly like that, you know, but that is, that that's a decision you have to make for the whole plan, whether you wanna have, you know. Well, you know, when the first one, when we were saying of the impact of, you know, climate change or something, they, we will. Continue to strive, you know, but basically, we're not gonna get there. We're, we're gonna be, you know, half the, half the distance to the wall is always gonna be half the distance to the wall. So I mean, we need to be saying that these are aspirations. I mean, it's the same thing with trees. If a community has, we are a community that is interested in climate change and tree canopy and. So when a developer comes in, if they take a look at anything, you have um the goals for a community. So you say, oh, this community is paying attention to its trees or this community is really environmentally sensitive, maybe we gotta be a little more careful. Those kind of things, maybe they have a, make a difference, maybe they don't make a difference. I mean, like Upper Southford, it's an open space community. I think any developer that comes in there and buys a large piece of property, if they read anything, they're gonna know they're gonna have a little more trouble. Doing things that are not allowable under zoning.
Yeah, I agree.
Any other comments on this?
There will be an opportunity at the end to look at them in totality of all the goal, aspirational goals.
Right. And I would say the same thing I said last night, I mean, I I don't know what the goal. Right, and I would say the same thing I said last night, I mean, I, I don't know what the goal, what. I don't know what the next step is, or if there are other. You know, if there's a, a slide that's gonna show us more of the detail of what you guys are talking about in that paragraph, in that sentence. But it begs to wanna have more detail attached to it, I understand that as a, as a aspirational, you know, like catchphrase or something. But what is, what are the, what are the pieces of that, like what?
We are anticipating having a series of, just like the current comprehensive plan.
You have your goal and you have actions, right, targets or whatever.
So as an aspirational goal, I get that, to some degree, the other ones, but. That was the details.
And besides Drew, myself, Chloe and Ann. You guys are the first ones to see these, so, you know, they are going to go through, you know, an intense. Wordsmithing and ideasmithing process, but we figured we would show it to the best minds in the county first. And then move through the rest of the process.
No pressure. Wow.
I'm gonna hand it off to Drew to talk about stormwater and flood.
A ride that's on, uh, the Schuylkill River, my son lives in that apartment building.
Which, which window?
Good looking.
Which window?
Well, I mean, it's possible if this is looking off of the Schuylkill River Trail. He's living on the, his balcony is the lower, on the left-hand side.
He has a balcony already?
That's one of the beer tags on it?
Yeah, my son doesn't drink beer.
Oh. We saw, we saw some of these, uh, drivers of environmental and infrastructure pressures. Or the drivers of the problems, we're gonna look more closely, what's, what's affecting our infrastructure, what's affecting these environmental systems? And as John mentioned, more annual precipitation, more intense storms and even microbursts where a storm just parks itself over. An area like Green Lane, just dumps a whole lot of water at one time, and, and so these. These are very problematic, they're hard to deal with, and you put on top of that, uh, our aging stormwater infrastructure. You know, we, we keep seeing about the, the Pottstown area and their, uh, stormwater, uh, arches that are collapsing. And the increase of impervious, uh, you know, we need to get around, so we need roads, we need places to park our cars, but it's all impervious and how do we handle that? And.
Do you have a sense of the costs involved in. Renovating or repairing the aging infrastructure in the county?
Yeah, um. Yeah, I mean, just, well, it depends, I mean, if you're including the electric grid in there and, and, uh, just, you know, it's billions, I mean, if you're.
The slide you're talking about. You know, sheds and.
Yeah, I mean, it's, 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 it's a huge amount.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't, like, you, I wouldn't be comfortable saying a billion.
Yeah.
I mean, easily, easily.
And, you know, when we did return on environment, one of the issues is what do you save by investing in green infrastructure? Or natural, um, utilizing natural systems to save you money over the long run is one of the things that we have to promote. And have real numbers, so people understand that this is, this has been done someplace, this is what they save, not just pie in the sky saying, you know.
But that's over a long haul, we're talking about, you know, just repairing and renovating existing systems that are.
Right.
You can't afford to get rid of them or close them out, we need to continue to upkeep them.
It's, it's two sides of the same point, I mean, you're fixing things that are. Aging and, and need to be fixed, but at the same time, Dulcey's right, you've got to. I don't think people really realize, you know, when you talk about preserving forests or, or whatever. I, I think they just kind of think, oh yeah, trees are good, or, or, you know, well, he's a tree hugger, just not paying attention to him. But there's a real cost or savings that comes along with that, because the trees are attenuating the stormwater flows. And allowing that water to soak in, and it's recharging Dulcey's well and.
And you have to give people the facts about it, because otherwise they look at you and just say it. But the reality is the bottom line for the community, you know, is beneficial. So you just have to make that decision, and short-term decisions sometimes have long-term impacts. And they're good and they're bad.
And what we're trying to avoid are some of these extreme effects, loss of life, loss of property. And so on, some, some folks were out, uh, after the, the last hurricane, some folks were out of their homes for over a year.
Well, what was it, we still had people in, in, um, we were housing five hundred, I don't know the number, but it was a astounding number of people. Two and a half years later, we could, because we can find affordable housing for people who don't have a lot of money, and they're in those red places.
Right, and, and the folks in the red places where they're, you know, if they're living in an apartment building and the apartment building is condemned because of the damage from flooding, they're not going back there. They have to go somewhere else. Why is it such a challenge for the municipalities? Well, that's what we've been talking about, uh, but there are other things that we can look at. Uh, flooding is possible outside the hundred-year floodplain, we, we've seen that. Uh, people need to realize that and incorporate that concept into their ordinances. BMPs, stormwater management. You know, a lot of the concepts have been updated, but a lot of them are still kind of old and behind the times, we need to bring them up. Um, the consideration of our emergency response people and safety, you know, at the time the development is being proposed and reviewed is very important. Evacuate, if you're gonna build in a floodplain and FEMA lets you build in the floodplain, then you have to have an evacuation plan, some sort of flood trooping. Uh, considering the downstream impacts, we always say that, but boy, oh boy, is it difficult, because you have this incremental. Increase in impervious surface all along the watershed and, and you, you can't point a finger back and say, well, my property flooded because of that. You know, five miles up the river. And then how do we pay for this all, getting to Steve's? Yeah.
John, on, on the cost of, of the work that has to be done. Infrastructure work. Do you find it's more effective or more effective to budget the, the expenditures in municipal or county budgets? Or do it, which is why a lot of municipalities do it now, it's their grant money.
The grant money, that if you don't get it, your infrastructure just gets way more expensive to, to eventually get to. We try to budget as much as possible, we just, we can't budget a hundred million dollars worth of infrastructure repairs, if, if the money, it's just not there.
But if you budget it, you then have a better chance often of getting the grants, correct? Is it matching?
You'd match money, but it doesn't budget the whole project.
No, 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 no.
It's, it's, we, our strategy is spending money on engineering and design. So that when a project or funding stream becomes available, we have a much favorable position to get money. But that doesn't mean that those questions eventually ever get done, so we try to partner with the water authorities to try and save money so that. When they look at their projects, we try to piggyback on to get some of our stuff done, but, I mean. If I had twenty-six million dollars, I could use it tomorrow, but then that creates a problem with, with staffing and scheduling. And contractors and. Yeah, I mean, you're disrupting school bus routes to have your complete borough torn up.
I know you're not gonna, you're not gonna deploy twenty-six million dollars all at one time. That's the, and I don't think residents understand the long-term effect of not upkeeping this infrastructure. And that's the reason why budgeting it is so difficult.
It's a very easy thing to.
Understand, they don't understand the tax, the tax implication.
Very easy thing to push down the, down the. And, and, you know, and as soon as you talk about what we need to raise taxes to help solve this problem, people upset about raising taxes, so, sorry, Bob.
The problem with the, with the general public is that they've got a flooding issue and they wanna know why you can't fix it tomorrow. They don't realize that there's permits involved in it, there's the scheduling, there's the design plans. So a twenty-six million dollars dropped on John's lap. He may be the exception, but typically if it's dropped on her lap, it's probably three years before you're going to shovel in the ground. So, you know, I think you're, you're to be commended that you're forward-thinking, that you're doing the design work. But the problem is, you know, if you get the permits, they're only good for a certain period of time and then you, you gotta redo something else.
The, the big picture, you know, people want things solved yesterday, but the big picture is they've been developing, it's probably been developing for fifty years. You can't just turn around and change them, you know, in, in.
The old methods. Old traffic concerns, roadway concerns.
Old design standards for hundred-year flood, I, my words, I believe that we're gonna get a mandate from FEMA or some. That the hundred-year flood isn't a designed by Turin, it's gonna be like a two-hundred-year flood.
Or may, or maybe use the five-hundred-year flood. Which there's no, there's no legal support for a municipality to do that now, but if FEMA came out and said that. Why are we doing it, or, or how are we doing it? Uh, as you know, this comprehensive plan is not just Montgomery County Planning Commission's plan to draft and implement. There's other, uh, county offices and agencies involved. Uh, we have a role, we review the land developments, we also provide ordinance language, uh, for stormwater and flooding, uh, reduction. We're doing studies, the perkyomen mapping and flood study, we're taking clean water partnership, this county stormwater plan update. We do a lot of public education, or. Planning Commission education programs and other outreach, but we also have the Conservation District, they review plans during construction. And if the stormwater management facilities malfunction, they're out there, uh, working on a, uh, correction, corrective action. Uh, the Office of Emergency Management gets involved during storms, uh, and, and after. Or, you know, evacuation and, and emergency procedures and also, uh, support for mitigation projects. And the County, uh, Assets Infrastructure Department, we maintain. Matt will tell, can tell us how many miles of roads and how many bridges, but we have a lot of them and, and they all need, uh, stormwater, uh, management to be associated with them. So we have another draft aspirational goal. In twenty fifty, Montgomery County will have improved water quality and significantly less flooding. Initial reactions, it's too, too broad, you need more information, anything in addition to that?
Well, I mean, it's, it's a great aspirational goal for both of us. Goes back to some of the conversations we just had specifically with the second part of it, which is significantly less flooding. So. Yeah.
Yeah, let me give you an example, uh, of the, the type of, of recommendations that will be underneath these aspirational goals. Here in particular, one of them, one of the goals or one of the recommendations that we preserve and enhance the tree. Canopy, and then we'd list underneath the reasons for, uh, that goal or the rationale behind that goal. And then we have maybe some information on, on the side as well, so as, as the plan develops, we are going to be putting that meat to the bones. But for now, we understand, you know, these are kind of aspirational goals floating in space.
Wouldn't we say we'll deal more effectively with flooding? As opposed to stop flooding?
Well, one of the things, I mean, one of the things that we did here during the, uh, public meetings and so on was. You need to, flooding needs to stop happening, I mean, which is crazy, I mean, I don't know how you do that, you build a huge, huge wall or something.
You have a direct line to Mother Nature, you say, stop doing this.
Behave. Uh, moving on to sewer and water infrastructure, there are emerging water quality issues. It seems like every few years, something else comes up, uh, PFAS is the, is one of the current, uh, issues. The pollution from the naval air, uh, the groundwater contamination from the naval air base in Horsham and the surrounding communities, their wells are being affected. Uh, it costs a lot to remediate, it takes a long time to remediate, and all the time, stormwater runoff is carrying more pollutants into our waterways. Uh, there are a number of programs, as you know, MS four programs, TMDL programs and so on at the state and federal levels. To address a lot of this, but these are issues that the municipalities and the county face. Another one is privatization of water and sewer infrastructure, which has good points and bad points. I mean, sometimes the, uh, private company that comes in and buys the sewer system has the resources to upgrade this treatment plant. Whereas a municipality might be struggling to find the money to upgrade their sewer treatment plant, so there are some beneficial aspects to it. But there's also a downside in, in, see, the, the rates can increase and the public, uh, doesn't like that. Um, and it can increase rapidly, often they have a period of time where they guarantee the rates won't increase, but after that, there's no guarantee. And the rates go up. The other side of things is, once it's a private, uh, company that's running it, they're running it as a business. And so if they have excess capacity, say, in a wastewater treatment plant, they want to see development to send those flows so they can get money. So it kind of rubs against some of the comprehensive planning that we're, that we're promoting.
Their only role is to approve the Act five, five thirty-seven.
Right, there, there's, the municipality still approves land developments and so on. And, and speaking of roles, we do, we do have a role in, in, in water and sewer infrastructure planning, we don't have a direct role. We got out of the Lower Perkyomen Valley Regional Sewer Authority decade or more ago and no longer, uh, owning and operating a wastewater treatment plant. But we do review the Act five thirty-seven plans and the planning modules and so on for land development. We do look at in the comprehensive plan, how can water and sewer? Help, uh, preserve the rural resource area and direct growth towards the, uh, appropriate growth areas. And we coordinate closely with the Health Department, they do a lot of the on-lot systems, they do the, uh, wells, they do the emergency wells. Which I'm sure they, they had a raft of during this last drought, there's an emergency well permit process, so we coordinate with them. Oops, wrong way, sorry. And our draft aspirational goal for sewer and water. Twenty fifty, Montgomery County will have modern, efficient and equitable sewer and water service in the growth areas. So maybe getting a little more specific, uh, we wanna make sure that we're directing growth where it's appropriate and sewer and water service is a tool for that. So, any initial thoughts?
A lot of words.
I thought you were enjoying the picture and the, and the, and the, and the, the Bergy quote on the, uh, the water tower.
Is it naming, they have naming opportunities on that?
What, what's your basis for making this statement that twenty-five years from now? We're, we're gonna have a modern, efficient and equitable sewer and water service.
The idea is that we have, in order to write a comprehensive plan, we have to understand where we want to go. What would you like the county to be like in twenty-five, uh, years, in, in twenty fifty? What kind of a Montgomery County do we wanna have, and we have to be able to describe that, and I think we do maybe need a little more detail in how we describe that. Um, and then we have to figure out what the county can do to move us in the direction of those goals, so I'm not, I mean, this would be fantastic. To get there and feel like, okay, in twenty fifty, when we see twenty fifty, this is all true. It may or may not be true, but we have to describe what we want in twenty fifty. And then, okay, what are the things the county can do that will move us in the direction of these, this vision for twenty fifteen? So that's what the goal of these is, is to say, what do we want twenty fifty to be like in the realm of environmental systems and infrastructure? And then our next phase, which is not included in the presentation, is for us to come up with all the steps that we can recommend to take to get there.
What, what do you see with the large conglomerates such as Aqua and others that are buying up the sanitary sewer systems? And the water systems in the county? Are you finding, and, and maybe, maybe this is an answer you have to research, are you finding that they're, they're putting a lot of money? And bringing the systems up to good standards?
Yeah, Aqua is, I've, I've seen a lot of work that they are doing. They are improving the systems, and that is, that is the plus for privatization. A lot of these, you know, they have a large user base. Uh, instead of one municipality, you know, raising the rates for its residents alone and, and improving the system on their backs. They can draw from their entire user area and put money towards improving the system, so that is a benefit. It's just when the, when the cost gets, but.
And they're motivated to, they're motivated to, to create capacity.
John, did you have a?
Just, I, I was in one of those communities that Aqua took over and, I mean, the price is, is insane how much higher they are. I pay, it, it's like one month, but I will pay four months to have the floor. Then the sewer is the jaw-dropping one, because Bucks County owns it and they go, they, they assume that. Everything that goes down the drain, even all the water you use is going down the drain, so if you will have a garden or something, they're gonna charge you. Like, it's all based off your water, your water bill, and, um, and there, I probably, in like two months, I would pay what I paid a year. And it's like, and I know they have to update the system, but it's like, it's a lot, and you're like a single dad, like, like, and you get a bill that's just like. It's, it's jaw-dropping, you know?
Yeah, there's, there's two aspects to that, though, that we. Yeah, there's, there's two aspects to that though, that we, you know, have to be considered. The, the cost of public water, you know, per gallon is ridiculously low. I mean, honestly, it's not, not the cost of producing it. It's, it's just low. And so that, when, when they start charging what it costs to produce it, then you know, you see that increase. And also with, with Bucks County Water and Sewer, they're, yeah, they are a little behind the times. Most water companies or sewage facilities don't bill for water usage. They're, they're, they have either a set rate or they meter or whatever.
So to your point, I mean, I think part of, I'm not defending the private, privatization of sewer system plans, if you got to imagination, I think they have certain positives. But part of that is because many times Aqua or these sewer authorities are brought in to municipalities where the sewer systems are sorely under, under maintenance. And they're picking up some of that cost. I mean, Sheldon is a great example. For years, they were unable to put the money into upgrading the sewer system. Aqua took it over and he's doing a lot of work, creating more capacity, but I'm sure they're going to bang, bang the municipality residents with, with increases. But some of that is, not all of it, but some of that is because the township left the system to go unmaintained.
In Springfield, they use that money to build all new buildings. They build a new police building, a new municipal building.
When, when they sold the system, yeah, when they sold the system to.
Right, which is a great way to use it as opposed to using it in some municipalities where they use it for operating expenses.
Yeah.
Springfield did it and upgraded their facilities that needed to be upgraded. It's a one-time cost. They got a one-time payout and they got a one-time cost for it. To pay, they've got a one-time cost to do the work. There are municipalities that have taken sewer money and have put it into their operating expense, their operating revenue and that one's out of.
And when you, when you hire someone to take over the system, the economy will done getting the work done, deciding they just never screw it down.
All right, all right, let's move on.
Go lightly on the content, I guess.
I'll go lightly on the content. All right, we are going to dive into the shallow end from here on out because we got, we got to move some product today. All right, we are talking about infrastructure. We have an energy infrastructure. This is a huge topic of conversation. You know, this is something that we really need to tackle. The idea of transitioning from our traditional fuel sources. Our communities are interested in and environmentally, we are looking for that transition to renewable energy. It brought a huge, broad conversation about energy conservation. The best energy is the energy you don't use. Replacing that with renewable energy sources like solar, geothermal, you know, wind, hydro, big fan of that. You know, and we are looking at that transition to electrification. All of the renewable energy sources that we are looking at require electrification. How do we get our building stuff to become more electrified? And can the grid handle that? Are we, we are running into issues with PICO, with other utilities of how do we need to upgrade that infrastructure to handle the additional load from the electrification process? So these are all issues that our communities and the county is facing. Once again, we are looking at how this comprehensive plan can guide not just our, the planning commission and our communities, but also county operations. So, you know, the planning commission, you've heard me talk about this many times, you know, the ordinance products, the one I even just talked about before, which is hopefully upcoming in the first quarter of two thousand and twenty five. We are involved in any number of regional planning efforts through DVR PC around these energy and renewable energy issues. Assets and infrastructure, the justice center across the street is being designed to be energy efficient. We are looking at the Norristown Dam. We are in the process of getting our FERC licensure to hopefully be able to put hydroelectric power on the Norristown Dam. And at our Greaterford, not Greaterford, at the Eagleville Correctional Campus, we are in the process of doing a study there, looking at how we can reduce our energy consumption and incorporate renewable energy there. Because we have the consumers there between the prison and our emergency center, which needs to become more resilient by incorporating solar. So the redevelopment authority runs our CPACE program. We continue to have the most successful CPACE program in the, in the region. Financing, energy, sustainability, climate change, resiliency projects in the private development world. And then the commerce department is really key on trying to connect our business interests with what is going on with our energy infrastructure. Having those conversations of where are areas where we hopefully can connect into the grid to be able to meet the demands of the businesses that want to come in.
John, how did the drought affect the water flow for the dam and this was in, actually in, in process or working? How would it have that affected?
So obviously the flows reduced. It is my understanding, and this will be an interesting question when we talk to our consultant. As far as I know, that the flows would not have reduced, that it would have stopped energy production. They are looking at low flow hydro turbines on the dams such as the Norristown Dam, which even if the flows drop considerably, there would still be enough. Now, obviously if the drought continued much, you know, farther along, we might run into issues. But the drought, as we experienced recently, as far as I know, would not have been detrimental enough to affect our energy production. Thank you. So not only do we need to concern ourselves with building electrification, but we got lots of cars moving around, lots of vehicles moving around where we would want to electrify that, those fleets as well. In Pennsylvania, we are seeing the registrations go up considerably since two thousand and twenty three. Now, there is some talk that the market is starting to level off a little bit. And that's an interesting question of, is it leveling off because of the infrastructure is not there to support it? And so we have to, we got to wrestle with that. That is something that, moving forward to two thousand and fifty, are we going to have the infrastructure to support the growth of EVs? Or are we going to hit a point where we have more infrastructure and not the EVs to use it? And then, you know, that is a balancing act, which hopefully we are progressing and we will continue to progress towards the inclusion of EVs. In two thousand and twenty three, we had over nine thousand EVs registered in the county. We were the outrank county in the state. And we had over three hundred publicly accessible EV charging stations.
The problem is the NEVI, the NEVI program is incredibly slow. The regulations and the hoops that somebody has to go through to deploy money from the NEVI program is just arduously slow. And it's most likely going to go like, it's making me, it's making me redeploy something else in this part of it.
So that makes it even more critical for the planning commission and our job to save the planet is to work with our municipalities on ordinances that as new development comes in. Are there parking spots being either EV infrastructure installed or having them be EV ready to reduce the costs? When that market, how can we push the private sector to handle what we hope is the growing number of EVs that will?
The problem is, is the level one, that the DC, I mean, level three DC fast charging infineers. This, you know, makes longest travel by EV more difficult and creates more, more hurdles for someone to purchase a vehicle. Unless they're good at a lot of the other driving.
Yes, and that is, so, once again, not an easy answer. We're balancing the market. We're balancing people's behaviors and their needs versus the infrastructure that we can require and the infrastructure that we can provide from a public standpoint.
And solving the problem in those red zones from the beginning slide, because it's difficult to get mobile charging. When you live in a community like Norristown or Fox Town where it's row homes and there's no off-street parking.
Don't get, don't get John started on that. As a liver, liver in a row home and having my son hang out the window to take that picture while we were going to an event in St. Joe's Prep in the city like. I mean, it's, it is an issue and that is one of the things, the planning commission, we don't have the answer. We are working. I'm working with my arch nemesis, the transportation department. It's been difficult. They're not easy to work with. But we are working on an online guidance for municipalities where we talk about the issues. We give them mapping tools to be able to explore their community on where EV infrastructure may be most appropriate. And most importantly, since he's not one of my arch nemesis, Tim in the community planning section did an amazing job creating a model ordinance for our communities around EV infrastructure. And we, and we hope to have that, to show that to you in the very near future. Stop looking at your watch. I'm moving as fast as I can. Assets and infrastructure is working on an EV transition plan for the county for our fleet so we can lead by example. Yep.
Will this building be adapted? I mean, I hear everything about the justice, you know, will, or will we have anything in this building to help with some of these concerns or?
That is, yes, that is the hope. Regrettably, I am not intrinsically involved in that EV transition plan. So I don't know exactly what's going into it, but I, the conversations that I've had have included one Montgomery positive as a place for EV infrastructure. Especially for between this campus, the inclusion of a level three charger based on our, the county's vehicle usage. We have a ton of passenger vehicles which are used by the prosecutor's office, by sheriffs, by others. But they would need that level three charging to be able to, to move these vehicles through to get them charged so they can continue in their daily routine. Our aspirational goal in two thousand and fifty, countywide residents, businesses, transportation and government will have transitioned to renewable energy sources.
I mean, aspirational to two thousand and fifty, nonexistent for the next few years.
This is, we're, we're, we're shooting high. All right, everything that we do, you know, this is such a huge topic and we've hit on it multiple times between flooding, between the costs of sewer privatization, between EVs, we have to focus on equity. This is the tool that we use from DVR PC that we included in the potential disadvantage. It is the indicators of potential disadvantage from DVR PC using indicators. We use this because it's regional, so we can compare apples to apples, both between our projects, DVR PC and other projects. I always like to give the disclaimer, this is, this all comes from federal information. And just because you may be one of these census groups, just because you are female, does not mean that you are disadvantaged. Just statistically throughout the country, there is a higher potential for disadvantage. So we have to make sure that there's equity involved in every decision that we make when it comes to flooding during the event, after the event. Where do these people go back to? Everybody has a home where they don't, aren't sweltering in the heat. And those vulnerable populations have the ability to live a healthy life. And then EV infrastructure, houses that are modern, efficient, and that everybody, if they want, can transition to an EV vehicle, even if they live in a row home. So around equity, in two thousand and fifty, Montgomery County response to environmental issues will include, including climate change, will consider the needs of all. Now, I'm not going to speak for the comp plan planners, but it's an interesting conversation of, now, I'm going to argue that equity should be addressed throughout the whole of the comp plan. And whether we call it out for housing and for sustainability and for transportation, or whether it becomes a, or principle, that is a conversation.
I don't think you have to say including climate change. I mean, if we're talking about responsive environmental issues, climate change is environmental issue. Or are you just trying to emphasize that for, for, for a specific purpose?
Uh, we were trying to emphasize it. Now, whether it stays in or not is up to.
It was called out as a driver at the beginning, you know, land, land development and climate change are the two main drivers, but we don't need to keep it in.
I mean, I think environmental issues and then using the next, the next top, the next paragraph or next list of things to emphasize those priorities. I would just leave it as environmental issues. That's really the equity goal.
We are going to have to, there's a way to.
Yep, I can skip, skip me at the end. So we said stuff in the two thousand and forty plan. You guys can read it. I'm sure you've already have the two thousand and forty plan memorized. So we're moving on. The survey, people were interested in these. Boom, look, look, number eight, number ten, seventeen. People are interested. And then what could Monaco twenty fifty say about it? This is the six aspirational goals altogether. I'm looking at Anne and Chloe as to whether we can talk about this anymore or whether we are going to come back to this at a later point.
Tell us what you think later.
It's not your fault, John.
Okay, um, real quick. So next steps in this process, I'm going to continue presenting topics to all of you at the monthly board meeting, as long as Scott's willing to put up on the agenda. Next up in January will be transportation and then preservation and recreation. People, places and jobs will follow that. It's the same trajectory that the advisory committee is taking. Once we talk with all of you, we, we turn back to the staff to have a workshop of all of them to try to further refine goals. You can, we, just based on your input alone, you all can see that this is a work in progress. We hope to present these ideas in some very abbreviated form to the county commissioners, just to give them an idea of what we're working on and, and where we're heading. And then more public outreach next year, spring, it's number twenty twenty five. I read another season of getting out there and talking to people and that just stuff, but hasn't happened. And then we're going to be working on, on writing the plan. That is, that is the goal for two thousand and twenty five and adoption, you know, later on in early two thousand and twenty six. Yeah, a little speed car. Next up, next up is transportation.
Matt, would you please make sure the time is here for your presentations?
It's always well.
I mean, if it makes you feel better, Matt, they call us the, the comp plan overlords. So let's, you know.
We call it like we say.
Definitely sounds like a nemesis. Continuing, updating us on what's going on.
Which is brigade of A C.
We appreciate all of your thoughts and comments. We do. We do. Could be Atlantic City, Mexico.
Okay, our next, next up is the community planning section overview, our continued have the board interact with each of our sections in the county planning commission in today's community system planning.
All right, we're ready to have some fun here in December.
I was looking forward to this one.
Good. So this is the second presentation of the section and sort of an overview of the section's design went, I believe, maybe back in June. And so community planning is up next and Robert's getting up the PowerPoint presentation. Essentially, we're just going to give an overview. Hopefully we're going to try and make this interesting. We're going to have each of the community planners at some point highlight some of the work they do or some of their background and experience. And try to make it interesting for you. You obviously know what we do. We appear and we'll present comprehensive plans, we'll present zoning ordinances, we'll present the work we've done in the community planning assistance contracts. But we want to show you a little bit more about who does the work, some of their background and experience, and then how it gets done, sort of the, under the hood. What are some of our internal processes? What do we do behind the scenes to actually get those products delivered to the community that you see? So that's our album cover picture in Ambler. That's in one of the parks that actually we helped design and build. So this is again, we're going to divide this into three pieces. Oh, where, where was the Ambler? It's in a little pocket park that we created. We designed, got a grant for them to build.
They call it Ambler Square and it's like in front of the CBS that used to be a grocery store.
Let me do one more there.
Aren't we so cute?
Yeah, and Mike Narkwich took the picture. So that's.
Is there any, uh, is there any singing involved in this presentation?
Not planned. I mean, we can always, you know. Tomorrow, we have the courthouse choir tomorrow.
No, I was talking about the holiday part.
Yeah, yeah. All right, so break it up into three sections. I get the boring part. I'm just going to re, review some of the, a little bit of the what we do and, and some of the higher level management things we think about when we have the community planning assistance contracts. Marley's going to talk about the who, a little more focus on the, the planners themselves and the work that they do and the experiences that they have. And then Mike Narkwich is going to talk a little bit more about that under the hood, how we get it done and some of our internal processes for moving forward. So I'm just going to talk quite quickly about the history, how we go about the community planning assignments, how we're sort of the agency glue and, and in fact that we work with every section multiple times in, in a week, in a year. And then just some of the, the small challenges of the job. This really is, I, I. And then just some of the, the small challenges of the job. This really is, I, I think, one of the more challenging jobs in the office. Everybody works hard, I'm not saying the community planners work harder than anybody else, but I think it is the most challenging job in the fact that we have four communities, four sets of deliverables every month. Relationships that we have to manage with those communities, and there's just a lot that goes into the job and, and, and these people do it excellently. Program was started about 54 years ago, resolution in, in 1970 to create the program. Again, it went back to the idea that it should be something affordable. Good planning should be affordable to every community in the county. And we do have that 50% subsidy which makes it that way. And it's been successful for the last 54 years. There's not a lot that, that me or the predecessors of this position have really tried to, to change. If it's working, there's no need to sort of go in and tinker too much with it. We do have three-year contracts and again, some of this you already know, but that's very key, not only to sort of how we staff the agency and having some continuity to that. But it's always been stressed that it's a relationship and that planning is a process, not a deliverable, not a product. We're not gonna be a firm that comes in and just does your comp plan, does his zoning district, we're in and out, moving on to the next thing. We're gonna be there for the long haul. We're gonna hopefully understand your needs much quicker and much more clearly. And be able to deliver a product that's gonna be much more useful to your day-to-day operations and the type of growth. And planning that you're gonna be seeing over the next, you know, 10 and 20 years. To ensure the strongest relationship possible too, we've never, other than going out and making sure municipalities understand that we have this. To offer them, this service to offer them, and that they are clear on everything that we can do for them. We don't go out and we don't push it on the communities. We don't, we don't go out and sell it. We don't participate in any RFPs. We don't go out and get up in interviews against other private planning firms. The first decision a community needs to make is do they want to go with the private sector and sort of get somebody to do their individual product? Or do they want to start a relationship that's gonna be longer term and, and sort of build on the planning that we can provide for over numerous contracts? As opposed to just coming in doing one thing. We want, we want somebody that's really all in. I don't want to ever have been in a position where we convince somebody to take a contract. I mean, they need to be 100% bought into the process and bought into making that a good relationship. So in the last 25 years, just kind of looking from this century on, we've had between 28 and 36 contracts at any given time. And we have, and that's not including the regions currently, and the map shows we have 34 municipal contracts and four regional. And a little bit to Dulce's point, maybe 17 of those we've had for all 24 years. So half of those have been with us consistently for those, for those 24 years. Contracts are served by 11 planner section. We have what I call two adjuncts that also participate, who will be involved today as well. We provide essentially about a million dollars worth of planning services a year. We're cooping about 500 of that in revenue through the, through the contracts. And so when we do community planning assignments, and this is sort of, sort of the higher level, but it's one of the more important decisions that we make. In any given year and, and as the, the contracts evolve, how those planners may change. This is just a quick little chart that we use internally with all the community planners, all of the communities that they're responsible for and what night meetings they have. So we know what nights they have meetings in case we want to switch something, but also just to keep track of the total number of meetings that any, any individual planner would be attending. So most times, you know, if somebody leaves or somebody gets transferred to another section, the newer planner will kind of take over that, that stock of contracts. Sometimes that's also an opportunity for, for moving somebody else around, but in general, it is gonna be changed for that community where the, where the planner left. And that's often disruptive and can be difficult for them, so we, we try to minimize that, so we don't move planners out of a contract unless it's, there's some other good reason for it. It's essentially gonna be when somebody leaves that we have to replace, replace them. And we again, try to, try to smooth that process over as much as possible. And we've had several communities that have had to deal with it unfortunately over a number of years, some more than others, I'm not quite sure how that happens, but. But it is something we pay attention to and really trying to make sure that they're, we're providing that continuity. So matching planners with communities is, is a delicate balance. Some of the things that we consider. And first of all is what communities need the, the contract, need the planner designation. And so that'll be an opportunity to, is somebody we should move into that community? Is it somebody that might need to get out of another community or has maybe. Done the projects that are most important to them there and, and maybe need a different view. Otherwise, it'll be the, the new planner coming in. But again, meeting nights is something we have to pay attention to. A lot of communities, you'll meet on that second Tuesday of the month. And so if you already have a meeting on that, that night, you can't take another community that has a meeting on the second Tuesday. This has destroyed more great plans than anything. I've often sketched out a whole great process for who's gonna serve what and how a new planner will come in, will move some things around. And then I look at the meeting nights and it blows it all up. So that is something we obviously have to pay attention to. Plus, we want to maximize the number of meetings planners are going to a month. Four to five would be sort of that top end. And that's on a standard monthly basis. Sometimes if you're going to present to the governing body on a comp plan that you've written, you, you might go to a little bit more than that. Communities cancel meetings occasionally, might be a little bit less, but that's sort of about the sweet spot that we, we try not to overburden the planners on their night meetings. There's a spatial distribution too, not only to get a, a sense of different parts of the, of the county in terms of the old ring suburbs or rural community or suburbanizing community. But I also want to look at travel times and based on where the planners live. Try to make sure they're not all traveling an hour to every meeting and, and give them some variety of those travel times, just to, to be fair to everybody, because they all live in different parts of the, sort of outside the county and, and. Just be respectful of that.
Saying our, I think I heard Mike Narkwich just whisper, he does, he has a lot of time.
Alright, alright, I'll make a note of that. And then township and boroughs mixes too, because you know, sometimes people want to have, you know, their professional development side of things. They want to have some boroughs, they want to have some townships, maybe suburbanizing, rural townships. Depends on, on their background, experience and, and how they want to grow as a planner. Some actually will make, want to specialize. We have some planners that just have three boroughs, because they want to specialize in sort of that main street and downtown type of development. And so we, we always look to try to match that where possible. And again, looking for planner expertise and how that might match the work program of that community. When I started, I was an environmental planner. And I wanted to get some experience in doing what community planners do, so I was actually assigned to Upper Southford Township because of my environmental planning background. Because it was a community that was all open space, you know, stormwater management, watershed based. And it was just a good fit for them and for me to, to learn more. So we do look to, you know, sort of intersect those planner interests and expertise along with the community's needs. And so I'll let Tim Sal come up. When we hired him, we were getting ready to start some active transportation plans. He has some good background in multimodal planning. And he's also very interested in form-based codes, which Narberth has, and some other experiences that he has that match really well for those communities.
One thing I would say is that chart that you have. Just the list of community planner and this, you know, that's involved in, you know, on a regular basis or, or yearly basis is to get that. I would find it interesting.
Okay, I think if we update the community profiles that we had one point, I think it mentions to the community planners what contracts there, but we can get that information separately.
Hello, my name is Tim Staub. I'm the community planner for Narberth. New Hanover, Lansdale, and I'm also helping out on the comprehensive plan for Hatfield Borough. And one of the, one of the big things is that when I was brought in. As Eric mentioned, is that I come from an active transportation background. I worked in the city of, for the city of Key West for three years as their. It was called the multimodal transportation coordinator, but it really was by definition the bicycle pedestrian. Coordinator for the community and I helped out with a lot of like their projects in implementing their bicycle or bicycle pedestrian plan that they had just passed literally the day I got hired. So that was, that was a lot of fun. We got to experiment with different kinds of temporary improvements. And we got to work on a massive grant that connected, essentially it was called the Connect Keys Grant. That put bike racks and, put bike racks and bicycle facilities next to bus stops all up and down the Florida Keys. And this, and that's kind of what I'm happy about is that when I, I came here is that I'm, I'm working on two different active transportation, but. Active transportation plans right now with Lansdale. And Narberth and Lower Marion, and then also right now, New Hanover Planning Commission, the other night expressed a high interest in. Activating more towards trails and sidewalks to have a discussion about them for future use, and that's gonna be coming up in the next year. So it's really a nice combination. And the other thing is I specialize in. When I went to, back to school for my masters, I specialized a lot in housing and one of the links of housing has always been the form-based code. So right now, using Narberth's, Narberth is expressing an interest in just kind of examining their processes and how. To produce a good amount of housing to fit their urban community. And one of the things that they, they do have is a form-based code. So we're right now doing a, I'll call it a proof of concept. So. So we are, I am, I have 3D printers at home. And one of the things I'm doing is that we're using the, we're using the form-based code models that they have to print out. What it would look like. And the idea is eventually use this with development, basically proposed developments to kind of drop it in to the. Into like a community and to show this is kind of how it looks. So we don't, we're, so not everything is lost with, oh, maybe the building is too big. But then when you kind of look at it at a scale perspective, it, it fits the place. And the eventuality is to kind of scale this up, but this is a. Hopefully within the next year, we're able to kind of explore this even further, but yeah, that's the, that's the big thing that we're working on on the side, so.
You're gonna see these models on Steve's website. Question, did you have to print this with support?
Little, like the, the, if there's any porches, yes, I have to print them with supports, but um, everything else like it, it.
Nothing to do with anything.
The, the big thing is though, is that ideally if we could get communities to also get their developers to provide. Like 3D models as a file. In theory, we could 3D print them and kind of show the perspective of different things that they want to do, so.
Tim, did you know that Maggie Dobbs is moving to Marburg?
Yes, I, I already work with her in, in Hanover, so.
So I thought that our, our man. Again, I met her the other night, I bumped into her, and she told me she's moving. Brave girl.
And again, when we match those, those sort of expertise with the community's needs, you know, allows us to provide sort of more direct assistance to them with maybe less coordination with. Transportation planning than another planner might need in, in Tim's shoes. And then it increases planner satisfaction. And that's a big thing about retention, right? And keeping planners happy and growing and evolving as, as planning.
Any other planner bring you props?
I don't know. I don't think so. We started, we started a little big, didn't we? We started high. And again, I think the agency glue, you know, that's kind of just the, the term, but I think other than.
You gotta hear the problems right here when that came through.
Everybody, everyone wants to come for the, for the, for the head, you know. We're the one that works most with every other section, safe perhaps design planning.
On a regular basis. I get it.
You know, I, I, it was a nice way to say we're, we're one of the top.
You're the linking agent.
Yes, okay, we'll, we'll go with that. I'll, I'll revise it. But anyway, so we do utilize every section. In fact, when we sell, you know, to, to the communities for the contract. The planners are the conduit, but we're selling the agency. We're selling having the transportation section, you know, back there and their experience and the environmental section and, and all of their experience. Our landscape architects and their experience, they know, and, and the communities maintain those contracts, because behind these planners, they know not only their expertise and specialization, but everybody else behind them. And so that's, we are an agency extension out there. So we do use their work all the time in our comprehensive plans. Those sections are all reviewed by the other sections. We're doing a trail plan, obviously trail and open space are heavily involved. We're doing stormwater management, we'll do basin landscaping plans, we'll do park master plans. That involves design and the landscape architect, so we, we work with everybody very closely. But hopefully too, in addition to tapping into their expertise, it's an opportunity for them to maybe get some municipal level perspective on their work. You know, that they're working on things maybe at a much higher level at a county level, and they get the chance then to go bounce these ideas off. It's sort of the, you know, where the rubber meets the road. It gives them some new perspective on the work that they do and hopefully improves and brings some quality additions to their, to their work as well. And then we do as, as some projects, depending on what they are, maybe a park plan, again, our landscape architect will come in and lead that design process with the community, allow us to do some things concurrently. Other sections will take the lead where appropriate, and John has done this several times on sustainability planning. We've done sustainability, Scheltenham, Pottstown, boroughs. And he's come in and, and used his expertise to provide those. And he also works as one of our adjunct planners for Marlboro Township and is their community planner. So I'll let John just say a little bit about bringing his expertise from environmental into the work that we do in this section.
So you've heard me speak a lot today. I'm gonna try to keep this very short. The environmental section, you know, you guys can either argue about your glue, but we're the ones saving the planet. And we try to do that, you know, we think globally, but we have to act locally. That old catchphrase. We do need to work with our municipalities and working with community planning is a phenomenal conduit to do that. You know, we were able to work with Cheltenham, to work with Pottstown on their sustainability plans, with Collegeville. You know, that, that relationship is key. And it's also, as Eric said, it's been great for me personally as a planner, when I go and I talk to the other tree huggers. And I can say, listen, I don't think that's going to work because when you sit down at a planning commission, these are the questions that they're going to ask. These are the issues they're going to face. So it's such, and for me personally, it's been a great symbiotic relationship, working. Not only with Marlboro, but with the other communities as we are tackling these environmental issues, because you just saw from our earlier presentation. You know, it encompasses everything and all sorts of issues. And then it allows me to also work with other community planners and tap into their expertise. Not transportation, but I was able to work with Tim and Margot on this upcoming EV work. And they've done an amazing job bringing their community planning expertise into that project. So I'm gonna hand it off to Tim.
Perfect, perfect segue. You saved my job.
Thank you, John. Uh, yes, I'm Tim Kenechi. Thank you for the glowing review, John.
Mostly Margot.
Yeah, mostly Margot, yeah. So I just want to start off by echoing what John said, really the, the value of community planning, but really the all, the whole of MCPC is that we have such a diversity of experiences, interests. And backgrounds. And one area where community planning really does have the most, the most, you know, day-to-day work with is writing regulation. And it's not just subdivision and land development, it's not just zoning, but it's also when we have something very specific like electric vehicle charging stations and how to actually deploy that throughout the, the county. Or how we can make it easier for the municipalities to deploy, I guess. So with that in mind, when the EV model ordinance and ultimately the online product was schemed up behind the scenes by the higher-ups, they said, you know, we kind of need. Somebody from every section, so we have kind of Matt Edmund guiding the process. With kind of what are the outcomes that we want, along with John Lesher, having the expertise with EVs and all things sustainability, of course. And we have Matt Popek and Kevin Shavu on this as well, helping in their areas of expertise, and then Robert doing all the GIS work. And then comes in Margot and I, who are actually, you know, going to these municipal meetings, talking to zoning officers. And you know, everybody gets 247 reviews here in MCPC, but when it comes to the community planners, we often see them ahead of time. And we're actually in those planning commission meetings, seeing that back and forth. And honestly, sometimes the negotiation over, you know, what is the regulatory right fit? So basically, we, we kind of reverse engineer. So say, transportation and environmental, they say, you know, we want EV charging stations everywhere. In particular, we have the issue of townhomes, so how do we actually get to that on-street charging or some sort of like neighborhood level charging? So with that, we kind of have to reverse engineer that, get into the specifics, say, you know, what works in Narberth, might not work in Lower Marion, might not work in Marlboro. And ultimately, it's just kind of striking that balance. And with something like a model ordinance, you know, it's like, do we go to the, you know, the farthest end of regulation? Or do we leave it kind of light and then just add some context? So I think the value with that is really just, you know, we're working with the zoning officers, we're talking to the managers. We're talking to the code officials and seeing what's actually feasible as far as like administrative burden, you know, what can actually be enforced. So I think, you know, that's kind of what our value is with this EV model ordinance, just, you know, making it realistic and not pie in the sky that somebody says, oh, no, we can't do this. You know, really making it accessible and just talking to the issues in ways that, you know, makes sense and in the day-to-day will come up. Like John said, those planning commission conversations can go, go on and on, and they can think of things that we didn't think of. They think of the best case, they think of the worst case, so we have to kind of thread that needle. Yeah, get back to Eric's.
So again, it's a two-way street. You know, we actually are always tapping into the expertise of the other sections, but hopefully we provide some expertise back to either their individual projects or the agency-wide initiatives. So quickly, just some of the challenges, you know, what we do is constantly evolving. This is not the same field, basically, when I started 32 years ago. Stormwater management has evolved considerably. There was no such thing as form-based zoning, or if there was, nobody was talking about it. There's so many things that have changed. Multimodal planning has, has evolved considerably. Sustainability planning was basically, you know, has come about in the last 10 to 15 years. So all of that needs, we need to keep up to speed on all of these to make sure we can offer our communities the best product. And that, that depends on, on each of these individuals. Uh, and that that depends on on each of these individuals, um, they all bring their own expertise, they're all doing their own professional development and webinars, they've all gone to different schools, bringing in different perspectives. Um, and that's how we stay fresh, you know, is is having each and every planner sort of maintaining and and evolving as a professional. So that's that's really key, building and maintaining relationships, um, that is always a challenge, managers change, um, board of supervisors or commissioners change. Uh, and that you know, that could change the direction of policies, we have to stay on top of that, be able to read the room, uh, be able to read between the lines and and understand. You know, how much we can push, how much we need to pull back, uh, and manage those relationships, and that's again, one of the the real challenges for the community planners. I think over over any of the other sections is those ma- massive relationships that they need to maintain. And then lastly, this is something we kind of always have to reinforce with the with the planners, is um, you know, the the importance of staying at the table. And this is kind of one of my big things is that, you know, that's that's the value of this of this planning assistance contract, is that we're at the table, we're there to take advantage of opportunities to get things implemented. Uh, and if we can push too hard, uh, if we're too aggressive on things, right, um, you know, we we can be sent away from the table. And uh, and then nothing can happen, and so I think that we always have to to walk that that fine line of pushing and encouraging and chiding even municipalities to do certain things. But not going too far in where we get, again, dismissed from the table, because we have to be there to take advantage of those opportunities, and that's something I think we have to to really think about. And along with that is, we have to be willing to accept incremental change, we're not always gonna be able to hit the big home run and and get something major, you know, changed. Um, it's a lot of those small victories, uh, and incremental change, we're there for the long haul, uh, and we're there to to move the needle just a little bit. And hopefully then, when when the opportunities arise, we can, we can hit those home runs. Um, so, you know, trying to manage the frustration sometimes of of being able to to make those big hits, um, of being being willing to accept the the small changes. I'll turn it over to Marley and talk more about the individuals.
Now, I'll be talking about the who, community planning, the people behind all this work a little more, and wanted to highlight the incredible diversity of our backgrounds, um. And the value that that brings to our work, as well as talking more about where we work geographically and wrap up with a couple of challenges too. So this um is our current community planner, community planner roster, um, with our years of experience at M C P C shown, and. So starting with our newest planners, Adam and Margot, who both started earlier this year, um, all the way up to our fearless leader who already admitted that he's been here thirty two years, so I'm not. Revealing anything there, um, and we also have two adjuncts community planners, um, that each have one municipal contract, um, so again, John Lesher from that, um. Environmental planning section, as well as Chloe Moore, who was was the community planner for many years, but recently transitioned to county planning, but. We kept a piece of her, which is great, because that um also adds to our knowledge base um and years of experience. And here I um also wanted to highlight how community planners have a wide range of interests and unique paths for how we found. Community planning and ultimately M C P C, um, so the top part of this graphic shows our many undergraduate degree majors. Larger the circle, the more of us had that major, um, environmental studies tops that list, followed by history and political science, but. We also have planners who studied urban studies, sociology, marketing, music, and more. The bottom part of the graphic shows where we went for our master's degree, um. Almost all master's degrees were in city and regional planning or community planning. Um, Temple and Rutgers topped that list, but we also have planners who went to Cornell, Westchester, University of North Carolina, and others. Um, and lastly, the the lines um connect the individual planner's path from undergraduate major to graduate school for planning. The color corresponding to the color of our headshots that you saw on the previous slide. Um, uh, another component of our diversity that isn't captured here is previous work experience, um, which also ranges widely. Um, from food service jobs to lab research, um, internships in other government, other levels of government, advocacy on. On housing and other issues, and even office jobs in completely different fields before making the switch to planning. Um, so many paths, all unique, um, and all these per- perspectives from. Previous work experience and education to even geographically where we've lived and where we got our educations, all influenced us as planners. Um, so now I'd like you to. History majors? Global studies. There was a second history major, somebody. Maybe it was Naomi.
Yeah.
Um. So, yes, I just wanted to. Allow you to hear um from a few planners, um, personally, to share their personal story and a quick um. Story, a quick snapshot of how they found planning, which is actually our favorite interview question to ask first, because it. Just really gives you a great sense of of that planner's perspective right away, so first up is Matt, and then we will pull up Naomi on on the screen.
Did we just like an interview?
Everyone's already hired, don't care.
Don't get nervous.
That's why.
Yeah, tell us you're keeping a line.
My name's Matt Louvitz, I've been with the county since twenty twenty two, um, I had a planning internship in undergrad, and I did a lot of planning adjacent work uh in. Brad school when I was pursuing a political science master's degree, uh, my first job out of school was a zoning officer for uh. A township um up by me uh in Bethlehem, and um I was a zoning officer for nearly five years. Um, I think I, like, right out of school, especially, like, I grew a lot in this position, um, I gained a lot of invaluable. Um, experience interpreting and enforcing zoning law. Um, during this time, I got to work with planning consultants brought in by township, um. And uh, these planning consultants were brought in to provide their trusted uh expertise. In reviewing land development plans, writing code amendments, and presenting the results of the various research that they were doing. Um, this work that I got exposed to felt more crucial um to shaping and creating the type of communities that best serve the the people. Than the work that I was doing, not that the work I was doing was not important, but it felt very reactionary, you bring in a plan and it either uh. Is legal per zoning or it isn't, um, and so. Working with these planning professionals encouraged me to return to graduate school for a uh urban planning master's degree. Um, and I jumped at the opportunity to uh apply for a community planning position here at the county. So we'll pass it off to Na- Naomi online.
Hi, everyone, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, yes.
All right, great, um, yeah, so um after undergrad, I um spent two years in in Panama with with the Peace Corps and got to work on a variety of projects from. Um, improved cookstoves to um starting recycling programs to environmental education and really appreciated that community based work, so I was looking for. That kind of community oriented work uh when I when I got back to the States, and I had a friend from the Peace Corps who um. Was getting a master's in planning, so I I talked with him a bunch and um. Uh, got an internship doing um outreach around active transportation for the the city of Cambridge, Massachusetts, where I was living at the time, and um. After visiting, you know, my friend um and learning more about his program and talking to the professors and learning about their. The the kind of projects they were working on, um, decided that planning was the right next step for me, um, I really appreciated that sort of um. Interdisciplinary integrated approach, and um, yeah, I've been at M C P C for about three years now and really appreciate the. The ability to work at the local level while also having that sort of more regional perspective, um, all right, pass it on to, I think Adam's up next.
Yeah, me.
Hello, everyone. My name's Adam Schatz, I am the newest M C P C planner, I've been here five months, so I don't feel as new anymore, I've been getting involved in a number of comprehensive plans. But I have kind of a different path to planning. I got my undergraduate degree in American Studies, so history, sociology, um, I did do some some work in undergrad on. Housing, a thesis on immigrant housing, but ultimately I got involved in workforce development, and I kind of stayed in that path for fifteen years. Um, I've worked for a nonprofit, an institution of higher education, the private sector. Ultimately, I wasn't feeling fulfilled in that work, went back to school at night, got a master's degree from Temple and City and Regional Planning. Um, and. In that, in in working at, or studying at Temple, I actually met a lot of folks at M C P C. Um, someone that I spoke to before applying to the program was Brian Olsec. Um, but when I was involved in Temple's student planning organization, I interfaced with Chloe, I interfaced with Matt Popek. Um, and and others, just uh, you know, through my studies, bringing people in to speak at Temple and things like that. So I kind of knew that that M C P C was a, an interesting place to work with some really competent people. And ultimately, I went to a a networking event and connected with many of those folks and some others and decided, you know, I'm gonna come. Come work for Montgomery County, and it's been a great learning experience so far, and looking forward to continuing to work on housing, transportation issues, and and land use.
What's been the hardest to have transitioned?
Well, it's a different type of work, so I, my last four years, I spent uh really in in sales, but I was uh. Supporting all of I B M's internal training, and it's a massive organization in North America, so everything was immediate type of work. This is much more long range planning and things, so, so it's been a different type of of work, but I'm I'm starting to get the hang of it, and I I'm enjoying it much more.
Turn on the hair.
Yeah.
Have you had to work with Matt Edmund yet?
Not so much, but I I don't mind him as much as.
Pass it on to Margot, yeah.
Hello, um, so I'm Margaret Matreska, I started, I'm one of the newer hires, I started last February, so I'm nearing on a year. It's very exciting, it's gone by very fast. So I didn't have the same background as a few of the other planners, I didn't get a planning degree. So I did political science and global studies in my undergrad, and then my master's was in environmental policy. Um, but uh where I went for undergrad, so they didn't have a planning program at all, but I had taken some courses in my undergrad. Specifically, an urban planning workshop. That we worked with municipal officials, engineers, architects to try to create a park plan. Um, and this was led by a city planner, um, the professor was a city planner, and so I just really loved the collaborative nature of. This project and working with all different groups and stakeholders, and so that inspired me to do my master's, which was also led by the city planner. In environmental policy, but it was within urban planning focus. And so I, I just really liked the versatility of the work, and I. Did the master's program, and I've really appreciated working at the local level and being able to see the projects that you're working on actually. Make a difference with the community. And so it's also kind of full circle, because right now I'm working in um Upper Gwinnett on a playground rebuild concept plan. Which is kind of similar to my initial project of working on a park, which inspired me to get into planning in the first place. To me.
Right, if you find it, your environmental background, do you tend to go towards that when you work with communities?
I think so, I've also been able to work on the E V ordinance, which has been really nice and kind of. Move around a little bit, but yeah, I do like having the environmental background, and that does make me most comfortable.
Thanks, everyone, yeah, and just wanted to highlight how Matt and Adam both got their master's degrees while working full time, which I always admire. People's ability to do that and the determination that that takes, so, um, thanks for. Planners for sharing that.
Oh, yeah.
Here it is, yeah. Okay, Steve. Yeah, so, um. Yeah, Anastasia, well, I think communication staff took all of these gorgeous headshots, and then Anastasia created. The gut, the graphics that really make it an interesting map, um, and made the maps, so. Props to them also.
Yeah, great, that's cool.
Because, um, yeah, I really wanted to be able to graphically show. Where all of our planners are working, because on any given day, we might be working from. Home based workstations, from our offices here, or we might be out in the field doing site visits or onsite meetings with um their many municipalities. So, um, this just really shows how we're working all across the county, um, the thirty four municipalities, the four regions that we manage. Um, and a great visual reminder how our planners are traveling all across the county every month, um. And really representing the agency in the county, um, and as Eric mentioned, we try to match planners with communities that give them that range of. Types of work, types of experiences, the boroughs and townships, the urban and rural communities. Working individual municipalities and regions, um, I don't know of any other job where you can get that. Kind of broad exposure to planning and it's such, um. Such diverse work that you get to work on every day and it keeps it interesting, um. And so most of these planners, um, once they've been here a few years, they've been working with. Individual municipalities for many years and advancing projects, big and small, um, so I wanted to hand it over again for you to hear directly from. Some planners on um specific projects, success stories and and projects that they're proud of, so first we'll hear from Chloe and.
What did you say about that man, you know, a joke about it's about, like, but, um, you know, really does show. The, the, the tentacles that the county spreads out into the community to be the liaison or conduit, and even. Sometimes a small role, sometimes a larger role with the communities, and be able to coordinate. The the community, the municipalities' efforts with not just community planning, but also transportation, environmental, uh, county. And and design, I mean, it just really is the the people, the way this map is set up and and how and how. How it disperses throughout the county really does give the county that that ability, the county government that ability to have direct relationships with the municipalities.
And and the other, the other issue that I think is really important to our staff is Montgomery County is such a diverse county. If you're working in Douglas, you know, you could be in Rockledge, you know, and those are really different communities, and if you want to. Really broaden your understanding of how these diverse. Counties like Montgomery work, it's really great, even if you're not there specifically that you're working with colleagues. Who bring up the questions that arise, because understanding the different competing interests of all sixty municipalities. Allows us to do policy that is going to be effective for all of them.
And one last comment, there's a board game in there.
I know, let's think of them.
Okay, so as Marley already men- already mentioned, I was hired in twenty seventeen as a community planner, but during twenty twenty three, I transitioned to mostly doing. Countywide planning, hopefully Marco twenty fifty, you all know that, but I still work with Cheltenham Township. Um, but I worked for many years with Sauterton Borough, and one of the major things that was going on there was that. The Sauterton Area High School, which served for the entire Indian Valley of six municipalities. Closed in two thousand nine, that was right in Sauterton Borough and Wackolet area, the new high school is in Franconia Township. Um, and so Sauterton had this enormous redevelopment opportunity, a very large piece of land, especially considering the location. Um, and we worked very closely with them, actually, Marley was the community planner for Sauterton before I was, and she was working on this even before. I got, yes, right, so, like, how to zone this parcel, what do we want, what does the the community want there? What kinds of safeguards do we want to put in place, not knowing what could come in, um, and so I worked with them. On, multiple revisions of zoning and subdivision ordinances, um, and also in workshopping with. The planning commission and to some extent the elected officials in the community on what they want, because they didn't all agree on exactly what they wanted to see there. Um, including a visual preference survey and many, many discussions and thoughts, but it really. Like Eric mentioned, and Marley, um, the relationships that you build with the community members and the knowledge that you end up having of the community after being there so much over time. Um, are really a valuable piece of the planning work, and that I think. Those kinds of things, experiences that the community planners have in the communities, working on specific issues and projects and plans. Um, make the rest of the agency's work. Um, better and more relevant, because we have a better understanding as an agency of what's going on in. On on the very micro local level and that. In contrast to some of our uh peer counties that don't have this kind of community planning program and aren't out there as much, I think that their work feels more separate. Many ways from, like, the kind of on the ground planning, um, and that these these real relationships can um. Can have a great impact, agency wide, and in this particular case, um, there, there's a mixed use development in progress, there's buildings going up. Um, and that. Our work with them felt special enough, then it, when it came time to break ground and the actual development, they wanted me out there holding a shovel. With the uh other folks from the borough, so, um, it's a special thing and. with the uh other folks from the borough. So um it's a special thing and the they really rely on our institutional knowledge of, oh, didn't four years ago, we have a discussion about this or that and what did we decide to put in the zoning? Why didn't we put this in? And so they're like relying on us to keep track of all that. And poor Matt Lubitz is now the planner for Sauterton. Um, uh, I've offered to like talk to him about, you know, past things there because they they really do count on us um and the work that we do. So and John is next.
Thank you, Chloe. Uh, it's John again. I spoke to you last month and I think you actually got to hear a little bit about this uh when I was talking about Schwenksville. Uh, so from the county map, you saw that we are all over the place, but I have the good fortune of working with both Schwenksville and Lower Frederick, who are very closely linked communities. Hundred fifty years ago, they had a railway that tied them together. Now they've got the Perkiumin Valley Trail. But uh it takes a little detour on the way between the two. Goes up over Spring Mountain and uh that rail bed still exists, linking the two communities together. They want a trail. This has been a community vision for a long time. It's been a vision of the county even. And we studied it in the Sunrise Trail uh feasibility study years ago. And uh this was a priority that had kind of been bouncing around. Um, but it was really energized and you know, the community members, leaders uh were really inspired coming out of the uh trail summit that we had uh in uh Upper Salford Township a while ago. And after some back and forth, uh since I'm in both communities, they put together a working group to try to explore this issue, how they could build a trail uh working with the county. And so for about the past year, uh they've been uh kind of laying the groundwork to try and get some connection made. Now, trail's only about a mile long and but it's a long road to walk because of ownership and legal status of, you know, former rail bed. Uh, so the issues go back a long way, but both communities are working together closely to accomplish this shared goal. And it's been a delight working with them both, helping them to coordinate with our trails and open space and uh transportation.
Not a difficult thing. Everybody, if all the communities had hired or been planning. There'd be less of that conversation last year.
Thank you, Ken.
Hello, I'm Claire. Hi. I work with Lower Salford Township. Um, and I'm going to talk a little bit about the process of working with the township um and updating their village commercial zoning district. So I think I did present a little bit more detail about this, the deep the the project scope um as part of the community planning assistant contract update. So this might sound kind of familiar to you. Um, so to this, this project began a few years ago and I've been working with Lower Salford since I began here more than five years ago. So not too long after I started working there, uh we began this project to update their village district. Um, it began because there was a lot of development activity in their village areas and um there was a particular concern about the setbacks being really, really deep and out of step with a lot of the historic buildings that they have in um Harley'sville and Lederach. So we began with this one issue to try to look at their setbacks and 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 figure out what the appropriate depth should be and and it really snowballed from there. And we got really um detailed with this update and it began to become more of a a comprehensive update of this district. Um, and it's an iterative process, working um making the edits, working with their zoning officer, taking it to the planning commission, making revisions and this, you know, circular process. And and we're wrapping it up now, which is great. Um, but it has been a long um a longer process than I anticipated at the beginning. We brought in the design section to do some design testing um to confirm that the zoning standards are um what the township wants. Um, and the reason why I think I'm presenting on this project today is to to highlight the flexibility that this um that the community assistance program has. Um, that that a planner can go to a community and work with the same place and work with the municipality and there are different levels of um of staff to to refine a project and to make it fit what makes sense for the community as it changes over time. Um, and we're able, because of our our longer term contracts and our relationship, to be able to to fit that project how how it molds over time and even if it takes longer than anticipated.
And draw from the experiences about the community planners.
Exactly.
What they've experienced and what results they see in front of some of the parts of the pipeline.
Exactly. We work with each other and we get advice and um able to to work off of some of our other models that we've worked on and built and all of that to to help create a a great project.
And also share it with Tom and concerns that communities have, even if it's regional, you know, eastern part of county compared to western county, but mostly in the western county, municipalities are experiencing similar things. So sometimes it's county a lot of things. I think we have to share, not much, and share information.
Yeah, and we'll probably talk about that a little bit more later on, too.
The fact that the the western part of Montgomery County still remains almost thirty years later in regional planning. I keep saying, can't you do something in the east? You know, about stormwater.
Medieval towns. Medieval towns in the eastern part.
Well, the the regional contract too is definitely a part of it.
It really is remarkable. It's just a remarkable story.
I just wanted to wrap up, reiterate a couple of the you know, challenges or just opportunities that that we face um in this unique role because um as community planners, we wear those two hats because of course we work here for the county, but our day to day clients are actually the individual municipalities that we have contracts with. Um. And that, as Claire really did a great job of highlighting, that means we need to be flexible because at the municipal level, like things might move slowly or move quickly. Um, politics, leadership, staffing can all change very quickly. So um and that can just impact the types of projects and timelines that we're working with. Um, but that's okay because we very much value our long term relationships with our municipalities, want to be seen as their long term partner and to be seen as a resource. So sometimes we are playing that long game and um just want to make sure that they know we're there when they need us, when they're ready for that inclusionary zoning ordinance that we were telling them about a year ago, or sustainability planning, whenever they're ready um to take the leap on on something. Um, but lastly, I wanted to mention that um we can't and we don't shy away from public outreach and interacting with the public, but that comes with a whole set of challenges because you have to be prepared to face NIMBYs and occasional distrust of government officials because again, we are um out at these events and we're often seen as county employees, but really we're running an event and trying to get outreach on municipal projects. So always a tricky balance.
I mean, really and truly, I always said, you community planners have to be therapists. You know, you really, I mean, really, really do. And then sometimes the techniques that they train in psychology and interpersonal relationships. I mean, that's what you have to be good at. And I'm sure it's many times you feel you are a therapist.
I think pointing and saying you is always a great thing.
Oh, we get that a lot. Um, so now I'll hand it over to um Mike to talk more about the how.
Good morning. So yes, as part of the how and how the section functions, I'll talk about project management, professional development and strategic planning. Um, the community planning section management provides guidance to the section as a whole. Um, and that includes um talking about section policies. Uh, includes through doing so through coordination and starts with job training when a new community planner comes on the job. Um, coordination takes the form of both formal and informal coordination. Uh, we we start with weekly coordination, going to two week coordination as planners have been here longer uh with scheduled coordinations with section management. Um, but equally important is informal coordination just on specific topics when a planner has a question. Um. I know that Eric is a big proponent of the open door policy. So when community planners um feel the need to ask about something or just talk something over, we encourage them to come to us. Uh, equally important is the critical information we get from the rest of the community planners on the status of the contracts, the status of their projects. Um, from all the communities you saw on that map and how things are going, um whether they need any advice or or input. And that keeps us up to date whenever thing that's happening. And so a major part of how we function involves feedback loops. Um, and this has grown as part of how we work over time. Um, includes regional coordination, support groups, peer review groups for uh draft work products and section meetings. And so this is where everyone has a chance to provide input as well as get um guidance, get advice. And Dulce, good question.
Oh, no, no, I'm just trying to follow the line.
Um. And and so that allows everyone to get um tips from other planners who may have encountered similar situations, maybe done work uh on the same topic that um the planner is working on currently. So now, uh, I'd just like to ask Claire to say a few words about support groups. Um, support groups are something that Claire um has taken a a big uh part in initiating. And uh so yeah, maybe you can talk about uh what gave you the idea and how you think they've been received.
Internally or at public meetings?
Internally. Um, so we do have a few different support groups. Um, and the one that I was a part of creating and organizing is the code support group. Um, related to what I just presented on to with the Lower Salford zoning update. Um. Two years ago at this point, maybe we we, a few of us, a few of the community players had been working on zoning specific projects. I had one upper Moreland and also in Lower Salford, and there are various other ones that were that were being worked on. And um we thought that we have a lot of opportunities to collaborate as a section to to talk in our section meetings, but not to really get into the weeds with specific questions about zoning and it can go um can get really detailed about so and you can, you can talk very broadly about different planning concepts. You can um ask very specific questions. You can ask questions to other planners about how they handle specific land uses, regulations, et cetera. So this code support group has morphed as projects have moved along. Um, and now it's it encompasses subdivision land development projects and other planning projects that people are working on. Um, but it's an opportunity for the planners to have kind of an open floor floor for discussing these types of issues and questions as they come up in their different communities and different projects. And um it's a time for us to give advice, guidance, and also just brainstorm um a little bit more openly than we would in a regularly scheduled section meeting.
What are the support groups other?
Um.
They're one for public meetings?
We, that is a topic of conversation that we have discussed a number of times.
I would think that would be invaluable.
Yeah.
Learn everybody and everybody's experience and and have a support group that how to deal with public meetings.
Luckily, there are trainings on that as well.
What's that?
Luckily, there are trainings occasionally on that as well, webinars.
Um, yeah, we talk about that in section meetings a lot. Um, so that's where we've um, we've gotten a lot of updates on ongoing public outreach efforts, um how how they've been received. Um, it seems like techniques are always being um experimented with or or changing. Um, and
When I talked about it during the zoning work.
Yeah.
You know, navigating public meetings, especially when you're trying to be more broad and and long range planning, people are narrating on this micro.
Details.
Detail.
Really details.
I pull them away from that and stays the agenda.
Yeah, that's that's a huge challenge. Absolutely.
I'm dealing with local, uh, you know, governmental local um staff and and electric officials.
Absolutely. Um, so also as part of our our section management, we we do the the job training and we cover um a gamut of issues, but some of the more important include the topical um briefing new planners on what they'll be working on, whether it's comp plan or it's or it's a zoning ordinance update or or what. And we match them up with planners who are working on similar projects or have who have worked on similar projects um to be able to discuss some of these issues of length. And we also provide them with resources to get them started. Uh, transitioning into a role with new municipalities um is something it where which we use interim planners for typically. Um, so usually the first meeting or more that a community planner um goes into a municipality for the first time. Um, they have that interim planner there with them and they can also use them to get sort of like the uh institutional knowledge, a briefing from them on the work that that interim planner has been doing in recent months. Uh, of course, we talk about how community planners fit into the agency as a whole. Uh, we talk client relationships and roles in community meetings like we're just talking about. So so yeah, this is, this is um something that community planners um develop skills in over time. And typically they refine their abilities as they experiment with different techniques as they get more experience. Um, but there's a lot to cover here. And so that's why, one of the reasons we have, I think, so many feedback loops, because there's always some new topic coming up. Um, there's always a different viewpoint to hear from and and we're lucky here that we have um such a large group of community planners as well as expertise from around MCPC, which we can plug into those uh feedbacks. Um, two forty seven review training is also important. Um, community planners do enhance review letters and so that may involve more detail uh than otherwise. It may involve illustrations such as suggested site redesigns. Um, and this illustration is something that Claire worked on for Upper Moreland. And uh her suggestions led to um the successful uh site uh reconfiguration and Upper Moreland was very happy with that. Uh, regional coordination um is broken down by the colors you see on the map. Uh, so this is not to be confused with the official regional planning efforts in western part of the county. Um, this map shows how we break down discussion groups so that everybody working in a municipality or a region and non contract planners who write reviews for those places are all invited to these groups uh that meet bimonthly. And we have a chance to share issues, uh ongoing planning processes uh and identify areas of um concern potentially or opportunity. Um, I think it's an opportunity for municipalities that are next door to one another to maybe um to have us recognize that there might be an opportunity for a multi municipal grant application uh to identify uh developments of regional significance, like the formal regional planning groups do. Um, and also just learn maybe some best planning practices from the communities in your neighborhood. I think it's always more compelling. You can go to a planning commission and say, not only am I recommending this practice, but the township just next door is doing it already and they and they're happy with it. So section meetings, um what we've covered in section meetings and how we run them has changed over time. Um, I think traditionally they've involved updates from community planners to the whole section. Um, which is important, uh but we've also worked in more presentations. So it it gives individual community planners either a chance to rehearse presentation or to summarize an adopted ordinance or adopted comp plan for the rest of the section. It's a chance for us to bring in guest speakers. Um, so we brought in somebody from general codes specifically to talk about the enhanced illustration capabilities that that are an option in general codes, which not everybody knows about. Uh, we had SEPTA COM, we had Mark Castle when when he was at SEPTA, we had uh Pennsylvania Environmental Council and um and then Samantha from Walkworks come talk to us just as some examples. Uh, it's a chance for brainstorming, too. So if one of the community planners would like to get feedback or think through an issue um with different people, different community planners and get different viewpoints, um they may do that. And it's generally a chance just to do a little bit more uh education. Uh, with professional development, we've gotten a lot of support from the county and MCPC um as a whole. And we're fortunate um that that's the case and community planners have really made the most of it. Um, going to conferences, um watching webinars and current planning topics um and presenting as well. So it's a, it's a two way street where we're both getting educated and we're sharing our planning experiences um with others. Uh, and we believe that that doing so leads to increased employee satisfaction and job retention. Strategic planning involves retreats periodically. That's in twenty sixteen, twenty nineteen, and most recently twenty three. Strategic planning involves retreats periodically. That's in twenty sixteen, twenty nineteen and most recently twenty-three. And this is a chance to self-assess. And I know, Tim, you enjoyed the twenty twenty-three retreat in Ambler. So I thought I'd just ask you, you say a few words about your experience?
Absolutely. Yes, I just, I know, I know Eric doesn't like praise or being appreciated. No, I'm just kidding. It, it does, it gets uncomfortable. So I'll try to go a little light here. But I just want to say that the retreat really was just, it was really meaningful to all of us, community planners. It was really an authentic and open conversation. It really felt that not just Eric, but Mike and Marley really want to hear from us. And that there was no ego, there was no defensiveness. I will say there was some, you know, explanation of, oh, this is why we do it that way. That might explain, you know, little inefficiencies that we might perceive, you know. But apart from doing like the mock two forty-seven review and site plan review, which just kind of showed all of our different perspectives. You know, kind of what we hone in on with these reviews. So for some people, that might be the landscaping. Some people, it might be the overall circulation of the site. But I think the most meaningful part was the PET exercise where the floor was open. And even though Mike, Marley and Eric are, you know, like, like Mike said, the door is always open if we have any questions. Whether it's about our work or just about our like personal lives even. They're always approachable. There's no, no questions that were off limits. But this was just fully that, you know, balls in our court. So as part of that, we really were able to, you know, kind of air our grievances and get an explanation. See if it was, you know, everybody's feeling that way. It was just one person, stuff like that. And then there was real deliverables after that. So there was actually some changes to the processes. So something that was, you know, might seem small, but ended up being really meaningful for community planning in general, just because, you know, there's a dozen of us. Is making the two forty-seven review process more efficient. So it's, sometimes it's impossible to get all of the managers in a meeting, even if it's that thirty-day timeframe. And that becomes frustrating, not just for us, because, you know, we're getting anxious. We want to get the review letter out. But sometimes the contract communities have a meeting that's before that thirty-day timeframe. And we kind of said, oh yeah, we can get it to you early. Lo and behold, there's no meetings available. They've, they've really worked on that. And so I know it wasn't just Eric, but he took it back to the other managers and to Scott. So now we get notification about what the incoming applications are on Tuesdays and Thursdays. So we kind of get a heads up. Hey, it's coming in this day. Start looking, schedule a meeting. But also recently, myself and I know John Lusher also piggybacked on these like standing meetings. Where we just jumped in for fifteen minutes and we said, hey, we have this two forty-seven review letter we really want to get out. Maybe it just takes five, ten minutes of conversation, but otherwise we would have had to wait three weeks for that, for that meeting availability. There's tons of other things that were addressed that just help with our kind of day-to-day quality life things, like changes to the, to the break room. Changes to like how we, you know, marker scheduling, whatever that might be. And recently I also want to highlight Scott did something kind of on a condensed schedule where he met with all the sections and did something very similarly. Where it was basically the PET exercise for community planning and how we all interact. So again, just really authentic, really meaningful to me. I've worked in, I worked in a city and then another county for two-plus years each. And it just never felt like there was really that opportunity. This is the big one, but also it's the weekly or bi-weekly coordination of the section meetings where you really do feel supported. And they were all kind of working towards the same goal, not just as community planning, but as all of MCPC. So thank you, Eric, Marley, Mike, for giving us that opportunity.
Thanks, Tim. Appreciate it. Yes, another thing we did at this most recent retreat was sort of a joint site plan review. Which is Marley's idea and which, which I think everyone enjoyed as well. So, and just last thing I'll say is a couple of important things that came out were the suggestions to do regional coordination groups. The suggestions regarding communication, both within the section and with other sections. So that concludes our presentation and we'd be happy to. Be, be happy to take questions or comment.
I have a quick question. I guess it was around this time last year, we had a meeting with all the board members and we broke out into various breakout rooms. Is that, is that going to be again, something that I think, like Tim was very happy with what we were, we're talking about.
Yeah, it was very successful. We, we, we don't have anything scheduled as yet and I'm looking for the right time and purpose for something again like that. I don't have that identified yet, but.
That could well be forthcoming, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I feel like there's also some interest expressed then about learning more about the sections themselves.
And the comp plan.
Any other comments or questions from board members in the room or online?
I, I just want to say I really appreciate this type of presentation. I'm not there in person. I really regret it. One thing that Eric said before was that these folks are at times the face of the planning commission. On the community. And I think therefore we have a good face in the community.
Okay. Scott, you want to?
Yeah, we have some two things that are work program. Yeah. Since it was only ten minutes, it's part of your trajectory recorder and we'll have to allocate better time. We knew this was going to be a challenging. And just for the board members understanding, this was not intended to be a lengthy conversation about the work program. I think it was to get the process started, to build on the knowledge of the work program and then have further discussions next year.
That's correct.
Not our, this was not our normal work program discussion and we're shortchanging it. It was always intended, this was going to be brief and then there'd be a larger discussion.
Right. I'm setting the stage essentially and just really these two items are very important though. So thanks for your patience and staying over today. The first item is the work program distribution. So as Stephen said, we'll have a full presentation on this in January. But giving you the draft hot off the press right now, so you have time to look at it. And frankly, if you have, you know, any major concerns or comments, feel free and I encourage you to share them with me before January. If it's something we want to consider, be ready to address. If not, then we'll, you know, we'll hopefully move toward adoption at the same day. After we present it, although any, you know, minor revisions can still take place. The work program, I do need to say upfront, just to give you context, A, I said hot off the press. So there are, there may be still be a couple typhods and formatting things, a couple pictures that I want to update for previous year. Little things like that will take place before January. But the, the big thing about the work program is it's organized very similarly to last, the last couple of years. With focus, focused topics kind of kicking off and the projects that follow the different topics with different departments working on them. And the explanations of what those projects are. You can see new projects identified with an icon. The big change though, from previous editions, we added a new chapter. We isolated or separated the Monaco twenty fifty comprehensive plan. And the projects or tasks within that, given that this next upcoming year is so significant to result in the final plan for early twenty twenty-six. We wanted to really give it the attention in the space to identify the, the elements within that. So that's chapter two. Chapter three then becomes a revised version of what was called signature initiatives, which previously included the comp plan. Now it's signature programs. Many of the remaining items that were in that chapter are programs in themselves, such as the twenty forty implementation grant program. The open space program, farm land and so forth. So you'll see that is just retitled in a different way. And then the remaining sections are very similar in, in funk, in a structure and function. You have our core functions, which cover the, many of the day-to-day or week-to-week activities that take place throughout are still very important. And then the community planning assistance program gives further details on each of our communities. A highlight of the key accomplishments from last year or this current year, as well as the upcoming key initiatives in each community identified there. So I think that hopefully that's very interesting as well. A few of the projects you might see also in the focus topics of significance. To kind of get elevated out, but you can also see what's happening in each community here. And then finally, the appendix, I always say each year, this mostly serves our internal benefit. We try to, you know, look past section divisions in terms of projects. And as you can see, many of the products involve multiple sections. But here, here's where each section can really identify the things that they are specifically working on, both past and, and future. So that if, if that's of value to you, you can look at as well. So take a look again. Let me know if, if you think of anything and we can discuss it in January as well. And we'll go through some of the projects and work specifically at that time.
Would, would it be helpful to board members to receive the twenty twenty-four work program to compare to?
It is on, yes, it is on the website as a PDF.
Maybe if we can just send a link to board members, just so they can easily find it and, and be able to compare back and forth. And especially with Sandra being new and here for the twenty twenty-four work program, that'd be a good reference point.
Great. And I have an email open. I sent you one email during this meeting, which had the PDF of this for those who aren't here. We'll mail our copies tomorrow. I'll add that link that Stephen just mentioned to the second email that I have queued up to follow. Which includes my next topic. So we got on that? All right. So the second big item is the. What is it? The, uh, Monaco twenty forty grant program. So our county budget gets adopted hopefully next week. On Thursday by the county commissioners. In that county, in that proposed budget is a continuation of the twenty forty grant program. And the exciting news, I think I shared last month, they did increase the funding pot to three million from the previous years of two point five million. So that's great. Part of the rationale, part of the reason for that though, it was not so great. We did, we are essentially discontinuing the county transportation grant program, which was funded with a different source and that funding is no longer available. So our response to that, and it has been a little quicker and normally we take a little more time of this and present it to you more fully. But was to take the focus category for what was for bike and walk Monaco. In the previous, and, and this is all in the email, not about the send, but the old brochure. You've seen it, has that outline of what the focus categories are. That little category of walk and bike Monaco has been revamped to transportation and mobility improvements. And while it includes, for the most part, all of the walk and bike Monaco examples that could have been highlighted as a focus category project in the past. It has been expanded to also include more, more traditional or transportation vehicular use projects that might have gone to the other program. More previously. So the other, the sync, the document if you're here, that has the, just the straightforward word document. Has the text that will go into that description. So you can see what it will, will look like. We've kind of reorganized the projects and thanks to Chloe, I think, did a lot of that to just be a little more, I think, intuitive and cohesive. So I wanted to give you that, we are basically on a timetable to launch this, the open, the Monaco twenty forty program after the budget's approved. So before the end of the year, we'll be sending out notices, we'll be sending out the guidelines. The deadline for applications is still March first, as it always has been, but giving communities that heads up as soon as possible. So if you see anything here that, that strikes, strikes any concern or, or issue. It's really imperative that you let me know as soon as possible. Like I said, we're basically in about less than two weeks, we'll be moving forward with this unless we hear anything different.
How much was the transportation work program? It was a billion and a half.
It was a million, five.
Billion five.
And that, then there is a difference. That program did have a maximum project of five hundred thousand. Because they tend to be more big, bigger projects or involve more money. If, if they come through this program, it's still, the current cap is two hundred and fifty thousand. So there is that, that could be a deterrent, but it's also two hundred and fifty thousand. So we take what we get. That's all on that. I guess my director's report, I really didn't have much of importance, given the short turnaround. Other than Friday is our holiday party, as has been stated before. All board members are welcome. If you don't mind giving Karina a heads up, if, if you're going to attend, and we also have the white elephant exchange. Very encouraged to participate in that. Regift, you know, twenty dollar maximum. It's always fun. So that is at Publer's at one thirty in Bridgeport, although it's others, Conchog and Brewery. And we hope to. Yeah, same place as last year, if you were there. That's it. The events, it's a short list with the holidays and I wish everyone the most happy holidays. But the other comments or questions?
Anybody have any comments or questions for Scott? Board members in the room, online?
We'll adjourn and hopefully see as many as possible on Friday and have a great holiday, everybody. And a good new year.
Have a great holiday, everybody. Bye-bye.
Essentially, we have a bunch of models from when we did the Narbor. And then I just. Everything's sort of been done on that. I just hope that particularly Narbor, because they're that urban, but we could definitely.
Before we even do that, we should want to start the conversations, whether anybody has. I mean, it's not even that.